First year, we could come up with an estimate in terms of our postage reduction.
Good.
So that certainly something we could try to guess.
Yeah.
We'd probably need some help guessing what the participation level will be. We're not the only ones trying to come up with that number. But that's where the savings is right in postage.
Yes.
And again, for the excise tax and for the trash component of the water and trash bill.
Oh, you know, my bill was supposed to have.
Yeah.
But the property tax bill is the only one that has to be signed.
That has to be.
That you can't even opt in to stop.
Okay. Okay, so I'll go through just this updated version of the spreadsheet. I'm going to start at the top with what we believe is some encouraging information. We had a $721,266 deficit that we were working off of. We are factoring in additional revenue in the form of new growth associated with construction, permitting, and units that will be coming online. You had asked, and the assessor has now completed a review of development activity. And we can believe that there will be additional development that will come online to the benefit of the fiscal year 2026 budget. That amount is $500,000 that we're using for the projection at this point. And that would come in as an additional revenue stream on top of the $800,000 that we're using.
It was like $800,000?
Yeah. So it drives the number up to about $1,300,000 in additional property tax revenue. It's not tied to the rate or anything like that. It's not a tax increase. It's simply value being added to our property tax base a bit faster than we were expecting in terms of development. So that is certainly favorable for the town. Looking at the permitting, it's a combination of units that are coming online a little bit more quickly than the assessor projected at Marcus Landing, and a subdivision development that has picked up speed quite quickly and resulting in additional housing units that are being constructed and expected to come online sooner than we expected.
Which one is that?
Cranberry Mill. So it's multiple units that are under construction there. It's pretty good. And we're able to pick them up as partial construction along the way. So that's working favorably for us. The other component of this is health insurance changes. This would be a potential for a transition from our current health insurance carrier to a new carrier. That's something we've been communicating with our insurance advisory committee about, which represents our gains. It represents also an opportunity for cost savings, where we are looking at a potential 10% to 15% rate and premium and budget increase, which is negatively impacting our budget. If we are able to transition over to this new health insurance carrier, the national health plan, it will result in the ability to limit that growth to a little over 6%. It's something that is an opportunity that's been presented to us through a competitive process, and we're looking for cooperation with our employees in a way that will affect the individual employee in terms of health insurance costs, but also impact the town's line by reducing that expense. So we're optimistic that that will be able to conclude in the next week or two. We have some additional meetings upcoming with our employees. It does allow us to reduce a fixed cost and freeze up funding that is available for both the municipal and school budgets for this upcoming fiscal year. It does not solve our financial challenges. It does allow us to, in a material way, reduce our shortfalls.
And these numbers reflect that assumption?
They do, yes. We're going to go through our revenue and expense plan in a little bit more detail later in the meeting, but those are what I just presented were the highlights. We've reflected that in this $192,000 basically reduction in our projected deficit. And then there is, I had mentioned in the last meeting, some budget adjustments since the budget was submitted to you in February, that was about $25,000. So that puts us with a revised shortfall of $503,935 as of today. That's for the municipal departments only. It does not include any public schools. Can I stop there? Any questions with regard to that? At this point, just giving you an idea of what kind of the number is trying to get to in terms of reductions.
Can you just quickly explain this sheet that I have from last time?
Sure.
Is different than that?
Yep, sure. So I was about to go into that. So the biggest difference is that we had taken into account an assumption of $92,000 in across-the-board departmental reductions and adjustments, which were intended to reflect basically areas where departments over the past couple of years have been turning back funds. And so that was sort of separated out as $92,000 that reduced the budget deficit even further. And then we went through a detailed listing of further reductions. That was a scenario to try to get a story balanced. We got some feedback, probably most notably about the board's desire to prioritize funding the firefighters to the extent possible, the remaining firefighters. So I'll get to that in a moment. But what this version that you have in front of you today compared to the last version was probably most notably different, other than the dollar amount that it described, is we've broken out line by line with a code zero what that $92,000 would look like if we were to portion it across every department. This is not something that's necessarily been approved or reviewed in detail with individual departments, but the thinking is everything that's in the zero on that list there would be an adjustment to reflect what the trends have been in departmental utilization. So when we're the finance director, I say to a department, you should be able to make this reduction without having to reduce services. With the changes that I just talked about happening on the revenue side and with the health insurance, we're hesitant to just take credit for that $92,000 in across-the-board reductions because we are tightening the margins in the town's overall budget by not factoring as large a health insurance increase. And also by taking account for some new growth that maybe was going to happen in a future year, but is happening sooner. We're, I think, hesitant, not reluctant, not necessarily unwilling, but we're more hesitant to just say, well, we're just going to say to the departments, you can adjust $92,000 in savings. And the reason for that is because as we've made things a little bit tighter in the budget above the line, if you go where we're talking about revenue and fixed costs, we want to be sure that we're not making adjustments that are too, that jeopardize too much the town's financial standing by reducing free cash, reducing the money that's sort of our margins within the whole town budget, specifically the share of it that's within the municipal side of the budgeting process. You saw at the top, we didn't solve the budget gap at this point. We left, it's about $130,000 in range in shortfall. So I don't want to say here and represent that we don't need that $92,000 in savings, but I do want you to know that we're apprehensive about just taking credit for that full amount across the board because of how much pressure they put when you come to the end of the fiscal year. I know it seems like it's a ways away. We're talking about June 30th, 2026, but we all felt that way about the end of this fiscal year when we were talking about the budget last year. So I didn't necessarily want to start by focusing on the $92,000. I wanted to continue through and then kind of get some feedback on what we had categorized as what would be the actual reduction, which are the items in blue coded 1, 2, and 3. So does everybody, does that make sense to everybody? Everyone has seen that document, right?
Irene, did you want to add anything? Anything that needs to be clarified?
No. The $92,000, it's just things got tighter and tighter. So like Mike said, we're hesitant on those right now. We'd like to work through everything else first because some of those were just going to make departments extremely tight. And like you said, if we're pushing our revenues, we can't lose the free cash on both sides. We really need that, you know, close to 5% of our budget is free cash if we want to maintain our bond rating. And we're getting tight. You know, we're not going to have the surplus revenues because we pushed everything a little bit. And, you know, if we rely on the departments too, we just, we need to get through the rest of the process a little bit before we take some of that money.
So our average home value went up from $811,000 to about $855,000, correct? It might be off a couple of grand. Where, how is that money not covering our shortfalls?
Sure. So that, that amount is a shifting of the tax levy primarily. So we got that question a lot. We were talking about an override or debt exclusion and what the implication was going to be. And why is it my taxes don't go up 2.5% each year, they go up more than that, right? That's a common thing. I'm sure you've all heard that question. You all opened your tax bills and had that same question, myself included. The most straightforward way to describe it is that the town's overall property tax levy can increase by no more than 2.5% from one year to the next. But within that is a shifting that happens. And unfortunately, the trend has been year over year, the amount that's being borne by the residential class of property, so mostly single-family homes, but some kind of idioms as well, that amount is growing year over year. And what's happening is the amount being paid by our commercial, industrial, and personal taxpayers is shrinking. So, you know, I think it started at 85% or 86% residential my first year here. I think it's at about 88% right now. So in that percentage adjustment, what's happening is single-family homes are seeing an increase in their valuation. It's not creating additional revenue for the town, even though it's taking additional money out of the taxpayer's pocket. What's actually happening is our commercial tax base is paying less of a share when you look at the whole 100% of the tax base. And there's nuances that we've seen year to year, and you saw in the tax hearing last year, and a number of us have seen over the years, different classes of property are impacted differently. But that $650,000 to $850,000, $850,000 value, that's the group that we've seen over the years that's getting hit the most. They're seeing the largest increase. There are very expensive homes that are going up, but from a percentage standpoint, based on the sales, it doesn't seem to match what's happening in the middle, which is a frustration for us. And when we've talked about what happens when we shift within that class, so that we talk about the residential inclusion, moving the tax burden from the lower to the higher within the residential class, it doesn't necessarily improve things in the middle. And that's where we've seen a lot of pressure. That's not to say people aren't feeling it on both ends. I don't want to undercut that, but when we've looked at the data over the years, I think if Debbie were sitting next to you over there, she would say, it's that the average that's really been impacted the most.
Thanks. That was good explanation.
And it's a sweet spot, right? Just to, like, I feel like when you look, that's something that, for Massachusetts, $650,000 to $800 is still considered affordable. I'm doing air quotes, but really, that's where we're at, if you want to live in this part of the state anyways. So that, I could see where there's more, properties getting bid up at sale at that value versus ones either lower or much higher. So, but thank for the explanation, Mr. Gilberto.
Sure, no, no problem.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
So I missed the last one, so I'm just trying to catch up. It says on the police budget, reduce overtime to reflect SWAT participation ending.
Yes.
And then I see in the other column, it looks like two SWAT officers are retiring. Is that?
So it's one SWAT officer, it's a voluntary assignment, who is retiring right at the beginning of the fiscal year. We do not know at this point, and do not have indications that anyone's going to be stepping into that regional position from North Reading, so it does reduce our overtime obligations without having somebody participate. That doesn't mean that there isn't still a SWAT organization regionally. We're just, we don't have a member who's participating actively in it. We are still able to access it for services though.
How many SWAT members?
Is one.
Just that one?
Yeah, just one that, at least we've talked with the chief, that's all we've been told. Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And so I know you obviously saw the documentation. We talked a lot about the $92,000, but we didn't talk about the detail of it. We just used it as an assumption. And what I'm saying in the beginning here is that we're a little less confident in our ability to do that based upon what we're seeing in the budget process here, at least initially. So what we've shown you here is almost the reverse, where we're not taking advantage of that assumption. We're still showing you how it could be done, line by line, actually broken out to the dollar mark, right? In those categories, zero numbers. But what we're showing you here this evening would be a different approach, which would start with a category 1, 2, and 3 reductions and leave us a deficit still of $130,193. It wasn't our intention to balance the budget this evening. Again, we are, we're seeking feedback, you know, looking for the board to have the opportunity to weigh in. It's a little different than the budget process has been in previous years, as you know, because we've been closer in our ability to balance the budget and been able to do it in sort of one discussion. But in this year, there's obviously, there are impacts, not only this year, but in future years, that we're trying to identify and be aware of as we make our decisions going into fiscal year 2026.
So just one last question before we get going. So any items, so basically, we're looking, you're proposing some cuts in blue, which are levels 1, 2, and 3?
That's correct.
Turnbacks? No, reductions outside of turnbacks.
That's correct.
And code zero is included in that?
It's not.
Okay.
It would be above and beyond that.
Okay, and you're trying to limit as much as possible to, like, code zeros?
We are. I mean, we're trying to, again, balance budgeting for new growth, budgeting for, you know, what is a reform in health insurance, but that will help the budget on a one-time basis this current fiscal year, knowing that we have a stabilization fund for health insurance that we could rely on if we needed to in future years, but not doing too much that jeopardizes the margins of the budget. You know, when I say the margin, I'm talking about free cash, right? And I know for those, again, anyone listening at home who's not quite sure, when we say free cash, if you're just tuning in for the first time, we're talking about our revenue that might exceed what we projected was going to come in as, from a budget standpoint, or we're talking about money that was approved to be spent by a department but wasn't spent and was turned back at the beginning, at the end of the fiscal year.
And just add in there that that's the state's name for it, not ours.
The State Department of Revenue has assigned what I just described, which is the leftover money at the end of the year, they call it free cash. It's not free, it's not even cash.
Not free.
Say, call it free cash, then call it the people's cash.
The people's cash.
So again, we said in the last meeting that, you know, we didn't know that this was necessarily a solution, it was more about a scenario. Tonight's scenario is a little different than what the members who were able to participate saw last time. You know, this is a little bit more focused on where the impacts are in the budget. There can be some solutions for some of the one-time items, but there are options. So I'll take categories 1, 2, and 3, and I'll go through them. I think that might be the most helpful, and I don't want to ignore what's in 4, 5, 6, or 7. 7 being mostly a route at this point, right? Because you have it all in 0.
Okay, just for clarification.
Sure.
Those labeled 1, you say, are new departmental requests. So there's not money that's currently in the budget that's going to be cut. It's money in a proposed budget that are going to be cut.
It was an increase mostly for specific purposes that we're saying cannot be funded. Right, looking for an increase. Is that a fair way to describe it?
Right. Not all of 1 is new request, some of it is.
I guess what I'm going to try to get clarified in my own mind is that these aren't actual cuts to services, personnel, hours, or expenses that apparently utilize or enjoy by these departments in public and large.
I think that's fair. The one exception is probably the trash fee. We should probably talk about that. But the others, I think that's a fair statement.
That's a whole nother meeting.
So, trash. So I guess to really hone in as to what a deficit is, is the deficit dollar amount, does the dollar amount that we're working off of include these new requests? I believe the answer is yes.
Those are shown as items that would reduce a deficit, if not funded, from the $503,935 number to a lower number.
What would it reduce it to?
Quick numbers, 40, 51, 53,000. We reduce it by 53, so 450. Does that look about right?
I guess what we need to be clear about, when we finally finish all this, is, you know, what is our starting point? I think, what does it include? Not include. And then, if we're talking about level services budget, you know, level services budget means this is how we're currently operating, and this is what it costs us to do so, and to move forward with our contractual agreements and escalation of costs, this is what level services would be. And in addition to that, you've got some departmental requests to provide better level attentionary service to the public. So the level services dollar amount should be what we're currently operating with the escalation of contract negotiations and.
That makes more sense to me.
The cost of doing business. I just want to be clear for myself, but also for the public, that some of what we're talking about are very important and vital services that our department heads feel as though we need to provide apparently are not, and should, as opposed to current level of services and the cost of delivering those services is extended dollars.
Is code zero that you're talking about, code zero?
Well, just the way it's being presented.
I think he's talking about code 1, actually.
Yeah, I'm talking 1.
Level, what we already have.
Code 0, that's money that's already been in the budget and that has been turned back.
Ah, okay, okay.
But 1 appears to be a departmental request that wanted to provide enhanced services or better services or better delivery of services, meet the needs and demands, you know, one of the veterans, the previous officer, the current officer, the CD7. Those are all things that need to be addressed or should be addressed at when it was an issue to do something. It's not level services as only a level of charge, correct?
I mean, I think the administrative assistant, part of that is an increase in activity level?
Oh, no, no, no. There's an increase in, we haven't got enough hours for this person to meet the demands that are currently being asked, that specifies the veterans agent to do. We can't meet the demand because we don't have enough hours in the position to do that moment. So I just want to be sure that, you know, when we're talking about these things, some of these things, that we're not leaving the wrong impression or giving a misimpression that this is level services. A lot of it is, but that's where we get into the 3s and 4s.
Yeah, I think to respond, these are, these are needs that our departments, boards, and committees have identified.
Absolutely.
As important. So I don't want to understate that, and having met with a number of the department heads, you know, they do, these things are very important, and, you know, to being able to, most importantly, I think, meet the public's expectations.
I haven't been able to disagree with anything that they suggested to do.
Yeah, no.
It's, every one of them, the appealing argument during their presentations towards.
One thing as we go through this, right? If there's something that, so if there's something that unfortunately may be on the chopping block, right? I mean, like, it is what it is. But if anybody feels strongly, we'd have a discussion. Unfortunately, it's a zero-sum game. There's one pie, right? At this point, forget about future, I'm talking like today. Today's one pie. So if somebody feels strongly about one thing that they don't want cut, we have a brief discussion, and, you know, we generally agree, well then, you know, I think in all fairness, the board should let you two know that, hey, we want to keep, I'm not going to pick on anything, because then people are going to insinuate that that's what I want to keep. So throw a doubt on the board of anything on number 1 and say, what does the board think? And if a majority feel like that's something we need to keep, then, you know, when we see later on, maybe next week, that something else got cut on its behalf, right? At least we do, right? Because we do have to make decisions. Unless we just say, you know, out of all fairness, we're just going to equally cut across the board without, no pun intended, without any signaling anything out. So just as we go through this list, if there's somebody, if there's any item, sorry, I've been talking for 12 hours. If there's, if there's anything anyone feels very strongly about, that they want the board and then the administration to consider not touching at all, right? Just please mention it. So it's not, you know, something where later on, we're caught flat-footed when it gets too late to cut because, you know, I've seen it already in the spreadsheet, and it is...
Is it speak now?
It's speak. What do you think, Mr. Gilberto? Would you rather hear it now, or do you want to hear it later?
I mean, it's designed to be a workshop.
Okay.
So really, wow.
I mean, I feel strongly about that veterans services assistant. I think it's really needed.
A level funding administrative assistant.
Well, that position requires $25,000 per employee, that's in addition.
In addition, because it becomes full-time now?
It becomes, it crosses 20 hours.
Anything over 20?
Is there any way we can negotiate those hours to not make it 19? That's as far as it can go without benefits.
When we added the position, we kept it right.
What about a second part-timer?
Hmm, that's what I was thinking.
It's certainly something we could.
Throwing it out there.
Certainly something we could look at.
Because they really do need it. They need that help.
So the difference between having a second part-timer is very interesting, is that...
They wouldn't have to have benefits.
It would be just 8100. Am I seeing that right? 19 hours is only 8100. How is that possible?
No, you're level funding them 280, 219 hours?
I think they're adding 45 hours. That's all they're adding, 5 hours. So there's only 25, 24, 25 hours?
Oh, I see. So there's the rub. We're not adding a full another 19. We're only adding 5, but then that's how the, that kicks in.
And again, it's the same employees, so it's, for continuity standpoint, it's, but again, once you cross that 20-hour threshold.
Yeah.
You're, you're current $25,000 expense.
Yeah, that's a big one. So in short, in summary, codes 4, 5, 6, and 7, if we can get $130,000 off as a consensus, good to go. I think that's, I think that's an easy task.
Can you go down to 4, 5, 6, and 7?
So for just one moment.
Okay.
So it could be some portion that comes out of code 0 too. You know, we'd struggle to say the whole thing, but if that's where we needed to go, we could. I don't want to take that off the table. And I do want to flag the trash fee because that is something where the cost is going to increase and our budget will not sustain it. So, you know, that is going to need to be a future discussion for an increase, but that increase will actually reduce the deficit that you're looking at as well.
It's already created. On the revenue side, that was it. An estimate on the revenue side, assuming we either increase rates or handle the increase in traffic in some way. So I put an estimate on the revenue side to offset that sort of.
That was $40,000.
$40,000, yeah.
How much is it? With that, is the increase because of the tolls?
So, no, that doesn't reflect the tolls.
That doesn't even reflect.
No, it reflects the contractual increase in the final year.
That's just the increase.
Can Mr. Massey ask a good question? And I asked really early on, can maybe be reminded why we don't just attach that to the tax bill, the trash fee?
I'm not sure.
There's a lot of cities.
There's a lot of cities that roll it in. I remember I got an explanation for it, just if you can give it to me.
It was rolled out.
It would have to fit within the levy.
Right. Then it impacts 2.5.
Yeah.
So whatever you roll in, whatever you roll in, something else has to come out.
Okay.
Something else has to come out.
Good to go.
Yeah. But I will say one thing, because, you know, as someone who only deals with really, you know, things that are really popular in town, sewer and trash, you know, but with the trash thing, when we were looking at it, we have a very good deal going on the sole con, I mean extremely, because when we were, I think, we're $75 a quarter?
Yes, we are down here.
Okay. I have friends in Lynnfield that like, seem to be paying like hundreds of dollars for like every 2 weeks, forget weekly. I don't know if that's still the case. So I feel like we've been pretty clear with the community now for a few years that like, when this is up, like, we're not, like, this is every, like, it is what it is, like, yeah, I just put a W there. Yes.
Can I just jump in there, just because I didn't breathe it for.
Recycling.
You did the research, too.
I did a lot of research, and one of the things I researched was towns who don't include that, it isn't taken on by the town, it's, they do it themselves.
Private.
It's private. One of the downfalls of that is that you have... One of the downfalls of that is that you have trucks coming in and all, every day of the week, all different trucks from everywhere, you know, there's trucks everywhere all the time. And it was more expensive for people. And, you know, that was one of the things I wanted people to realize, you know, you're complaining about the price of your trash bill, but if you went private, it was going to be a whole lot more, but it's something that could still be considered.
Well, because with the trash fee, right, I mean
Just taking it out of our hands and giving it
But it's flat, right? So it's regressive, right? You know, if you make, you know, if you're doing really well, it's not that much, but if you do, so it's almost, that's a way to subsidize and live on the playing field because I've, my partners in Sudbury get their own, it's, it's a, it can become, especially if you throw special items in, they don't include, it can become a car payment every month.
Yeah.
So I feel like, like I'm happy you said that, Mrs. Gonzalez, because I feel like it's been brought up and I feel like that's one of those be careful what you wish for scenarios where, you know, when waste management says they'll come around for two fifty a month for three bags and you're like, what are you talking about? I'm exaggerating, but you never know.
You're not exaggerating that much.
Because don't they, when you, again, not to get full trash about it, but, because wasn't, isn't it based too about the ease of picking it up? Like if you're in like a, they charge based on, like if you're in like a nook of a cul-de-sac, like you're, it's not like coming off like a main street, like they're going to, they're going to ding you all the way for the inconvenience, so.
And recycling is separate, so you don't get that. You're paying for trash and then you pay for recycling. So, I mean, for me, I don't, I think nobody should be complaining if we go up on the trash. I think we're still getting that.
It's America, people complain about whatever they want.
They'll still complain, I know, but, I mean, I think it should be there to people. Like, go ahead and do the homework and find out what it would cost you privately.
So from the revenue plan, it was a forty thousand dollar increase that we projected. That was to cover our contractual costs for the last year of our current carding contract with what was JRM and is now Republic. They have met with the DPW director in the last week, to no one's surprise, they are, you know, pushing heavily toward an automated collection system. That's something that we may want, like we're doing with water rates to pre-plan for in terms of the cost. I don't want to divert too much of this conversation, but it does tie back to what we're doing here as a budget solution, at least for the upcoming fiscal year. I know the DPW director, you know, wants to meet with us, you know, at the appropriate time, probably in May, to talk more about what we do with the fee, but there is an increase built in this.
So in the interest of time, we'll have that separate because that's the bigger one. And, you know, we're going to, it's going to be a tough choice either way, but it is what it is, so.
The biggest complaint as far as the trash fee is the low end users, you know, the one who put on one little trash bag a week, you know, does a lot of recycling, and they go next door, it's got four barrels, you know, and they're three kids, four kids, you know, they generate a lot more than, you know, single citizen.
But again, if you were, if you were doing it privately, it's much more.
No, exactly. You don't have to sell it. Again, lots of conversations over the years with people.
And when we have it though, we'll have it too, to that user, right? Like, here's, here's, here's the bad part, if you're doing it on your own for that one bag, you're going to pay more than the seventy-five.
Exactly.
Because they don't care, like, well, I only had one bag.
They don't care.
The truck's here.
Exactly.
So, again, years ago, early on, after part two and a half people were deployed, this was one of the first things that was taken out of the budget in order to make more within the budget, one of the things that the services entered sustained, or whatever, certain service delivered. So it was, it was the first thing, one of the first things we saw.
But again, it's a meeting of its own.
So do we want to, where was Mr. Massey headed for the, remember where we're looking, remember when he made the point of which ones we're going to cut, the four, five? Unless there's anything else you want to touch here?
I think we're going down the list. So these are categories one, two and three, which appeared on, most of which appeared on the listing we reviewed almost two weeks ago now on the Wednesday evening workshop and was in the documents that were also shared in advance if you weren't at the meeting. So I don't want to say that they're unchanged because there are a few changes in here, but there's nothing that's immediately stepping out. One area is the library. We had a handful of reductions that we felt were maybe a little too aggressive, so I think one of those cuts, we moved to a lower category, so it no longer shows as a three, it's either, I think it's a five, right? And then the biggest one obviously is the firefighters, the four firefighter positions. That was a category one reduction to defer filling that, those positions until the middle of the year, so January first. We've taken that off and moved it down in a lower priority based on, you know, feedback that evening, based on feedback at the budget hearing and based on discussions since, since both of those meetings. You know, the primary reason being, you know, we're, as of, I think Friday, we didn't have a civil service, new civil service list out, even when we do have it, it's a matter of going through the candidates, but wanting to be positioned for either new hires or for whatever lateral transfer might be capable. And again, as we said on Wednesday evening a few weeks ago, that's an adjustment that's going to have to happen at some point in order for us to hire anyway, we recognize that. We tried to show a scenario, we got the feedback from, from the board and from others, and we understand that and the prioritization. Again, I can't understate it, you are likely to see a request for the final four to be hired in this phase of expansion in the fiscal year twenty-seven budget from the fire chief who will be wrestling with that. So whether that's able to be funded is a different story, but that would get us to eight firefighters in that, in that year.
Which would reduce overtime.
So that's the point, we're, we're in this transition and there will be an overtime savings, it's just very difficult to project what it's going to be right now. And I think the chief, finance director and I were hesitant to take credit for a trend that really has no data behind it to show it. We have projections, we know that when you hire eight, which we're not able to do when one fell through, eight out the door, that is, you save significantly, but we're not, not able to get to that point yet, so.
And then what happens if, what happens if you hire those firefighters and they all live far away? Those who are from North Reading are going to jump on?
No, that's what we're budgeting, we're budgeting for, so we don't have to worry about the call back.
So you don't have to have
What we're relying on now, the call back, the overtime is significant.
Right.
You know, whereas if we have people on staff, there's no need to make a call back.
You have enough people.
Many instances, we don't have the call back. So if we staff ourselves up appropriately, we meet the demands, meet the demands without relying on call back.
Just hurts upfront.
Just like terrorists.
My question is, could we, could we take these small sized fire fighters, the four firefighters squad, and actually make that a singular override that the state, the town would want? So you take it out of the budget and it becomes an override? And that's the only thing that we're asking the town to figure out.
So yes, you could do that. As we described in the discussion about the override last year, it could be presented as a specific vote on a ballot for a first fiscal year. In a future fiscal year, those dollars are subject to how they're appropriated to town to you. So you could have a financial plan, but understand that it's subject to town meeting votes, to use of those funds in the second year.
Yeah.
But to answer the question, yes, you could do it.
Would that be an advantage to that? Would that be a good thing? Under this situation? Because I don't think the town would have a hard time saying yes to that as an override.
Can you repeat that?
So you take the, you literally have an override for one purpose and that's for the four firefighters, you could hire them sooner or later, right?
And a hundred ninety-two thousand for the full?
The five.
Or five, whatever it is.
Five, five hundred.
You break that out, you make that, you take it out of this budget and you make it a separate, separate override.
I think that's
But with the training
It's like eight hundred thousand or something like that.
We're still on the hook.
Five hundred, it's a big number.
One ninety-two did sure, we want to have a say in all these other things. The blanket, he's just blanket accepting, that's the reason.
If they were, you're filling the ship level, but they're beyond the ship level, so we don't have to pay the backfill yet. You're only paying for them to go to the tavern, so it's less this time around.
I mean, I still think that's a kick the can. That's all, to me, it's like, I mean, this, this we just, just like when I thought that even pushing it six months didn't make sense because we don't want to lose out on good, I mean, I feel like we're still going to have that. It's a one time and also, I mean, me?
Raises the levy, raises the levy limit by that dollar amount going forward for over the day, but to the town administrator's point, it's still subject to town meeting approval moving forward. Only the first year you're getting the money that it's earmarked for. After that, it's in the pot. And again, we would budget that way accordingly, basically saying, you know, the voters chose to raise a half a million dollars specifically for four firefighters to carry that forward.
But then, my, my problem with that though, maybe I'm wrong, somebody explain this way. So you approve, whatever, there's the five hundred thousand, just do easy rounding. But then, how do we make sure that that five hundred only goes to the firefighters? Because my, correct, we can then decide that, you know, buy a Ferrari within one year.
Can't you be reminded for that specific purpose? So the vote in the initial years is specifically for that purpose.
For that year though, but then ongoing.
So again, you could say it's a four hundred thousand dollars rounding, right, for firefighters in North Reading, you could present it that way, but I, again, maybe I'm being overly defensive because of all we've been through, talking about overrides and death exclusions. I just wanted to be clear that in a future fiscal year, it is subject to town meeting appropriation to be used for that purpose.
For that purpose.
But during the, during the budget discussions and the finance planning team, it would be incumbent upon administrations to understand that this is the split, this is what the levy limit was, above beyond the regular level limit, which was raised five hundred thousand dollars earmarked towards the firefighter, and then you just make sure it stays there.
We'd be hiring them, we'd be getting it done sooner than later, and by the time it come to next year, you'd have to be saying, okay, we're going to fire them because we don't, we're not going to appropriate them. So that, that's going to happen.
I mean.
I mean, I think it's, it's a safety issue. I mean, it's a safety issue, we all know it is a safety issue, and it's got to be done. And I don't see the reason they'd be kicking the can down the road, like, we should, we should
Well, we're not kicking, we're not kicking over this.
The first attempt is to, is to fit it into the budget, because something else is going to have to do, and we're going to have to prioritize, what services elsewhere are going to have to suffer in order to meet those needs. You know, our first obligation is to put together a level funded budget with the prioritization that we need to have as important for the town to deliver. If that includes four firefighters, that means half a million dollars, or seven hundred thousand, it's going to have to come out someplace else.
I just think that
So then we go to town meeting with a balanced budget with four firefighters in it, and I think more could be, to this point, and I might change, is to include those four firefighters, and we have to decide what else is going to give in order to balance the budget. And then you're talking about, listen, it's, the pressure on the rest of the budget of the services and programs and it disappears as a result of this is too much for us as well, so therefore we're going to ask the voters to make an determination, you want to cut over here, what, four firefighters or not? If we decide four firefighters are coming anyway, this is the budget test that we're going to take place. If we don't want the budget test to take place and still want the firefighters, is a, is a question that you have to
So let's hold on that until we get over.
Yeah, and then let me just add, and I'm going to go to Mr. Massey, then I'm going to continue on it. My only thing with that is, I don't think it's a bad idea, but if we're going to do it, it's got to be presented in general, as a general op, like annual, because a different board could do something different with it. So to me, and it's not that it's a bait and switch, but, and no fault of us, right, we could present it like it's going to be for firemen, and then it could be next year and the year after, but then five years, you could open up the transcript and find out that whatever that five hundred is, plus the two and a half percent for the next five years on top of it, is not being used for that, and instead, that firefighter cost is now in the general and this, but, again, I, I just feel like, again, I'm not against over, I, I supported the other one because I thought we needed it, but I just, what I don't like in my opinion is, and, and again, I'm not close to the idea that we're going to frame it like this, that's what we needed for today, but the town meeting, town meeting, right, town meeting could appropriate this for anything. It doesn't have to be firefighter specific, like they could shift it to the, please, I'm just making stuff up at this point. And that's what I have an issue with because I think the first question's going to be, do we have to use it next year for fire? No. And then at that point, there goes the idea. I already know how this is going to land, as good as, you know, my presentations that they do investors. Mr. Massey?
Yeah, the only reason I would, I don't agree with that approach, with all respect, is you're basically blanket accepting everything, right? So you're blanket accepting, you're blanket accepting everything and asking for an override to solve all, all your issues. I think us five here were elected to go through this budget and balance the budget, as Mr. O'Leary, you've mentioned a few times in candidate nights, that is one of our main jobs. Though, I see a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I, I find ten minutes, I think we can do it, to be honest. But I don't think the blanket acceptance of everything without making an effort just to break out the firefighters, I, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think the word override is very popular around here either, so I don't think that'll become to fruition. Um, you voted yes.
We need a new name, run against it.
The, for the firefighters, so I saw a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I saw a conversation between myself and the chief, what if we hired two and pushed two? So if you had a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and you cut that firefighter line in half, that's ninety-five K off of one thirty, that leaves us with about thirty-five thousand dollars left to cut. We could be done with it in ten minutes.
Well, what was his opinion on that?
He didn't see
It's a, that's not my understanding. First of all, hiring two creates more logistical problems in relation to, you need to hire four in order to make it work for the shifts, because you hire two with the rotating shifts and the backfilling and the overtime, two doesn't work.
Well, you just want to give our firefighter, as I, as I explained last minute, you want to give our fire department a year to train, they don't have the resources to train for and get them all geared up and ready to go. So I think this is phasing it in. We're, we're obliging by our commitment, Mr. O'Leary, to the, to the fire department and to the town, we're obliging by that. All we're doing is phasing it in, we're just weaving and bobbying.
I think if you, if you had a more clear understanding as to how it works shiftwise and financially, then you would see how it doesn't mesh well and it doesn't save.
Actually, to be honest with you, we've been doing it for years.
Pardon me?
We've been doing it for years.
Been doing one for years.
So one more year?
What, doing one for years?
We've been handling ourselves okay for years.
And this is a question, this is a question of the most efficient means by which we can effectuate, first of all, we negotiated with the contract and get vital public safety services to the public.
A million times.
What's that?
We keep doing safety, but I want to point out the very obvious financial issue of why we're hiring four firefighters. So safety is critical, Mr. O'Leary, to hold safety over our heads, it's been held over my head for my whole career.
There's no need to do it if it is a safety issue. You, I wouldn't be advocating for it if it wasn't a public safety issue.
So you're telling me you've never sat here and said half of it is due to overtime fiscal issues?
Said, what is that?
I'm, I'm sure I'm good.
Well, hold on, before we continue, I mean, let, let me just take a straw poll because this is a big one. Does anyone else want to cut for, cut, want to add two instead of four? I know, no, no, Ms. Gonzalez?
I think I would want to hear the chief's opinion of that.
The chief's opinion just pretty much said that logistically it would be, not that it couldn't work, but it would be just more difficult to line up the shifts. I'm paraphrasing, but that's pretty much was his opinion. But again, I mean, just like, I'm just going to be honest, I mean, the fire chief, the police chief, like, they're never going to say not have more officers, more firefighters. I mean, like, on the flip side, but again, and then, Mr. Goberdo, please.
So I just want to share something that, that Gonzalez didn't have a bench to appear in the shifts. You know, there's the, the practical standpoint of the hiring and how it will actually happen, I mean, how many candidates we can advance at one point in time, how many candidates we can send to the academy. And that's always going to be an issue. It's not going to be perfect. I don't want to sit here and represent that if we fund the four, they're all going to start on July 1st. There's just no way to predict that. And it's highly unlikely to happen in that, in that way. But the secondary issue is the need to absorb that into the budget, overtime anyway, right? So making adjustments to fund that. And again, there's, I'm not going to say there's a right or a wrong way to do that. The chief has said to me, they could be phased, you know, two in July, two in January, two next July. You could phase it. Again, it's not ideal.
If I understand, the funding needs to be there so that it can happen. It doesn't have to happen all at once.
It needs to be carried forward.
But if the funding's not there, then you have to wait till next year.
It's actually more important for next year, knowing that we're going to have to make adjustments in the budget to absorb this implication. Even if you don't think you can hire them all on July 1st, you're making adjustments in the budget now in order to absorb that. And I'm not saying that that's what we have to do, but that's a way to approach this. Sorry, O'Leary, I just.
No, I was going to agree. If it takes you the whole year to fill those spots, the next year, you have to fund the whole year for those four and then potentially add four more. So you really don't want to be adding to this budget this year for anything, really. You're going to be cutting because you have four more to go next year. And even if you funded them for half the year, that next year, you need the whole year's worth of that.
Most significant.
Plus additionally, there are a few things that we funded as of January in the contract because of the contract changes going dispatch that we felt wouldn't really be in effect until January. So we already have those things that we have to fund for the full year. Some of the incentives and different things that happen within the department. So, and adding the lieutenant rank. So all in all, this is going to be a lot that you have to try to make up for in the following year.
What stuck with me, and it's neither, one thing that hasn't been mentioned, is that because of how we have to hire, the, I mean, maybe it shouldn't be FOMO, the fear of missing out. I think you mentioned that, that if we don't have it funded, and there's a class of people he wants to hire, he can't do it. So again, and I don't think, I think that if it was just that, you know, from Mr. Massey's point, if it was just a matter of a couple of extra administrative hoops that you got to go through an effort to be able to just do two work. I mean, I could may say, hey, if you strongly feel two for public safety would be enough at this point, I think I could get behind that idea. But his greater concern is that you may, it may be like an entire year before anyone wants. We're not exactly the most like, no one wants to come here, unfortunately, for that, these days it seems like. It seems like he, for fire, I think they solved it, or for police, excuse me, for police he solved it. For fire, it seemed like the concern was that the people will be there, being like, I'll give North Running a shot. And he'll have to say, you got to wait till next year. And he doesn't believe people would wait. Did I also hear that correctly?
I think that's part of it, but there's such a demand for paramedics, it's hard. Because you have your private companies plus your municipalities looking for the paramedics.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, to build on that, we would be seeking to hire paramedics first. It's likely we will not be able to hire every slot with a paramedic. That we will have to send some to training. And that is where we start to get into some of those logistical implications. And again, I'm not saying any of this to sway opinions one way or the other. I'm just trying to present you with the information and the factors that go into it. If we have a great list that comes out and we can hire, is it eight total, right? The four from this year and the four from next year, because we still have four spots that we have budgeted for, but have not been able to hire four as well. So the total ends up being the eight positions. If we're able to get to them, and there are eight paramedics, and they're able to get through the hiring process, we would do our best to hire them. And it would only be the logistics that would cap that number. But the thing that we're also trying to keep in mind is, if the board is prioritizing getting to the, what would be seven out the door, you know, there's an adjustment in the budget that does have to happen. It's a matter of when you do it.
So here's a suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. So it is 7:45. We'll need about five minutes to shuffle the room around before we start at 8:00.
Oh, no, we're all going to help.
To just point to the time.
But maybe let's go through the rest of this, identify some quick things, and then, you know, not that I want to make next week's meeting longer, but maybe if it's not too much trouble, we can, and then get another, maybe just tidbit opinion from the fire chiefs. I think it's fair, of running a parallel with two and with four, and what the cuts look there. Again, just for the sake of it's in front of us and then, because why not? Because nothing's finalized yet. And that was the whole purpose of this workshop, to look at different things.
Right. This is a different way to look at it than we looked at it two weeks ago, when we're looking, looking for feedback. And the circumstances have changed. They've improved.
And it's not, but just at least to see both.
Yeah.
Right? With both, okay. Okay, what else are you going to do before we have that?
So, you know, the categories one through three are mostly unchanged. The only other thing that comes to mind is, we added in category three, an additional $3,292 in reductions for the subsidy for Parks and Recreation. That was intended to basically level fund their subsidy from this current fiscal year into next fiscal year, rather than just specifically reducing their repairs and maintenance.
Could I just clarify something? Using the, that you can assist the finance director position itself. Talking about putting the person, the person in place this time of fiscal year, right? And what this is saying is waiting an additional six months before you lose. So basically going to double that position for all the requests before we hire. So to me, you should have, it's a vital position. It should have been filled by now. And we've been enjoying the fruits of O'Leary's labor here and their staff. Quite a lot of the units have free some cash going forward. But the position should be filled. And we should count it being filled earlier on in the fiscal year, which again, wouldn't be entirely for long if we don't utilize that instead of filling it in July or August, when it's going to be. You have to find another $43,500 somewhere else, correct? So I think, Mr. Chairman, expect what we should assist the administration doing here, saying, you know, a position like that, do we want to have it filled sooner rather than later? If the answer is yes, then the 43.5 gets moved somewhere else. And then same thing with the firefighters. If it's either two or four, if we're saying two as a minimum, you know, then it's two at a minimum. And then potentially four. Again, something else has to give. Then the prioritization starts to take fold here, and you can see really what moves up and down as far as prioritization. Again, if you want to add, you know, the veterans agent position, you know, then it's the 8,000 plus the 25,000. You know, then if it says, some of them would do more seniors in the senior center, you know. Then we prioritize, and then our choices become more clear. We know how it works.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Massey? We have sat here, I think, since 7:00, 50 minutes, we've learned how to go through this for a second time. We've talked about trash, firefighters, and system. We haven't done any, to this workshop. I mean, can we start, like, crunching some numbers here? I mean, we have sat here and not cut one thing.
But the point is that the ones that are later not. Can we continue working this quickly?
Is there anything else that we changed in these departments that you can think of besides library, fire, and Parks and Recreation?
And again, maybe 1,000-plus changes, a couple hundred dollars.
I'll just note the $76,316. That's a request for one of the two cruisers that were asked for in the fiscal year, 26 budget. We showed it as a reduction. It could possibly fund it as a, be funded on paper as a one-time expense with free cash. I should tell you that there is a similar request pending before the capital improvement planning committee for an unmarked cruiser in a similar dollar amount. Is it 8,000? When I did ask the chief about that, you know, he actually prioritized the unmarked cruiser as the stronger, the bigger need, rather than the marked cruiser. It was up to him to prioritize the two. So I did explain, you know, that they're sort of in two different processes. There's two different groups we got to talk to about that. But I think you should be made aware of that, and we'll similarly make the capital improvement planning committee aware as well. So that's new information, I think, too, from what we've been talking about.
So everything on this list, though, right? Even four, fives, go down.
Do you want me to, yeah, I was going to say, I can get to the four, four and fives. I'll go quickly through them. You know, the two that are for police and fire, we do use John Guilfoyle Public Relations for communication with the community about public safety-related issues. You know, we have a ballpark number that's on there for $6,000 for each department. That could be a reduction in a contracted service, but I do have to caution that it could result in disruption in communication with the community, or it could result in overtime or other expenses in the departments as they're dealing with issues that require communication. We have benefited significantly, so I don't want to make it look like, ah, just cut the PR firm. I mean, a lot of our residents are depending on information that's coming from that firm, so I don't want to understate that. I put on here to cover the cost of the plowing over at Hillview. I turned it in indirect cost. You know, basically, the DPW is plowing the parking lot there. This would be a fun, you know, the amount, the cost to us fluctuates depending upon the year. The golf course isn't open, but the function facility is. So I do highlight that as something that we are addressing, and have been addressing for a long time now, I think, right? I mean, it goes back to at least two contracts, right, Mr. O'Leary? The legal services, I had to, oh, that's a change. Yeah, I had to move that one down. We got our most recent legal bill in, and, you know, we are significantly further ahead of budget. I was hoping that we could make a reduction, but I think this will be the third year where we're going to exceed the costs. And again, it could be that we have a different vendor in a future year, and maybe this isn't an issue, but I think it puts us in the best position financially now, and also for, from a competitive standpoint, to have that amount fully, fully budgeted.
Can we talk about the public nurse real quick? There is one option to reduce public health nurse by six hours per week, which saves us $16,000.
Sure. Further down in the list, I think. Is that right?
I need to cut the position completely.
So we're not able to cut the position. We have statutory obligations for certain public health identified illnesses that we have to do reporting to, to the state. They have the cases that have to be monitored and checked up on. So I don't know that we would be able to do that. And to be clear, this was not a request or recommendation from the Board of Health or the Health Director. I simply identified it as an area to reflect an area where we have expanded services in recent years. We were at, was it 10 hours was the contracted services? It may have even been less for a number of years.
Public nurse, that was originally funded by COVID money that now we've taken on, correct?
There may have been one fiscal year where it was partially funded. We were actually, it took us so long to hire somebody into the larger number of hours that I don't know that we ever actually fully took advantage of COVID funding.
Can I now ask why the Board of Health can't, you know, the other members of the Board of Health can't do that? Has to be a public nurse. The reason I say that is because I think the Board of Health can do it without a public nurse. I think governmental wise, we should look to stop causing everyone, trying to solve everyone's issues that are outside of the four walls of government. And a public nurse to me is people have their own nurse, their kids have their own doctors, the school has their own nurses. I mean, I just feel like we're just, if we got to find something, I'm throwing something out there.
Could I just ask, by the state, are we required? Are you saying that there's a state requirement?
We are required to conduct infectious disease monitoring and control.
How many hours are we?
I'm not sure that there's a minimum number of hours, but there's a caseload that we need to manage at any given point in time. We need to have the capacity to do an investigation with regard to any outbreak. And I'm not talking about necessarily respiratory illness, but things that are far worse than that, that are reportable infectious control-related diseases. And I do just want, I do feel it's important to state that another service that has been offered is to provide community health-based services at the senior center. I mean, it is, it's not an employee in the senior center, but there's quite a bit of service that's being directly offered there. So I just, I feel it's important for folks to know that. We are not recommending this as one of the initial reductions, and it was not even proposed when we asked for a series of reductions, but we did feel it was important to identify it since the hours were added within the past five fiscal years. That's what it's.
Go ahead. So two weeks ago, I was trying to bring up about elder services, and so I want to speak about it now. We're going the wrong way with elder services. We should not be cutting anything if anything we should have.
This is not what you're doing. This is not elder services.
He's talking about elder services rather than not public health. He's talking about elder services.
Public health, health department, not elder services.
I was moving on to.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought.
No, I thought you were approaching my subject. I just wanted, you're a public here that, I don't want them to think that I'm trying to cut elder services.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm talking specifically about elder services, and we're cutting 41,000 out. And we're, you know, you're getting rid of an outreach coordinator, and am I missing something?
So that this is not a recommended reduction. We're only recommending items one through three. There's a whole category above of four, and then you would get into five before either the public health nurse.
Kim's under the impression that's what she was suggesting.
Items mostly of five is, we looked back basically the last 10 years, and the last things that were added for the last 10 years were put on the list just because they were more or less, those last things added, so when you have to retract your services back, what do you look at? The things that were added.
So you're not, you're not.
We're not recommending. That's why they're so low down on the list of five. We really didn't intend, like, there is nothing for elder services in the top three. We just didn't even want to go in that direction, but we felt in fairness to all the departments to list the things that have been added in the last 10 years.
So there's no plans to touch elder services?
No, but we felt, no, that it was, I mean, if you totaled these reductions up, they would exceed our budget deficit. I can't say I would recommend that based upon you.
And this is unchanged, so I'm not sure of the confusion coming from the board or the director. It wasn't supposed to be cut. I mean, if anything, we should be adding.
No, no, I think they're more, they're the conversation of the cut. They're going to cut.
This is just beyond those three, top three to get to the 130,000.
So let's do this, because we have to play musical tables. We've all seen it. We express our views of what we don't want on one, but what I'd like to see for the board is, not the hypothetical, what the recommended cuts are at the next meeting, please. So no, so no one, two, three, four, five, six, like what is? And then we can talk at that point, just so, you know, to Mr. Massey's point, to everybody's point, like, and then if somebody has a problem, maybe on the fly, but if you could do that, it'd be much appreciated. Because I think the buffet is too much, and I feel like it's hard to go anywhere, like, because then it's like, well, why shouldn't five? Like, why, maybe we can make this five or three, so if you could just come up with what cuts we, what you think, and then go from there. And then it just, it is what it is.
Can I just ask one more?
I was just going to say, it's just, it's very important that there's feedback that we can hear, that we hear it. And I would like for everyone to hear it at the same time, but rather than after that.
And I'm hearing it too, which is good, really. And the, no, we need to cut, this was projected out. This is not a secret. It was told. We actually had an extra board meeting right before June meeting that no override, no override, doesn't matter. This was coming. It's here. So let's just do it and move on. Because like, you know, unless we get lucky and find whatever that number is, you know, before, between now and next week, or June, which I don't think we are. So, okay.
Can I just ask one more question? I want to go back to SWAT, just because that's still in my head. We have one officer who's on SWAT. So you are saying that regional has a SWAT team?
So there's a larger regional group, and we contribute with one police officer. And like many of the things.
We contribute an officer? Is that required?
So the officer responds. It's a voluntary participation that happens on the officer's part.
There's no budget for that?
We budget the overtime for that officer's participation in the.
I'm just asking a question.
Sure.
Because we have the state police right up the street who have their own SWAT. Why do we have to have an officer budgeted for SWAT when we can call the state police up the street?
So I can talk with the chief about the details of how the response happens?
I know in at least one situation when SWAT was brought in, and I can vouch for this. The state police SWAT team was on the premises, on scene immediately, and had, and were told that they could not respond. They had to wait for NEMLA. So I know that for a fact. So that's where I'm coming from, like. So, I know that for a fact, so that's where I'm coming from, like, if we don't need to budget for an officer for SWAT, and we can just depend on handover, or, you know, Janvers?
Certainly talk with the chief of order, but to be clear, we are proposing to cut the funding for our contribution. There would not be an allocation for overtime for SWAT participation.
But would they be asking for us to put another officer in?
I'm not sure that they're.
Which would require training and.
I'm not sure that they're specifically asking us, I think it's been a voluntary contribution on the officer's part and on the town's part to send a representative.
Okay.
So, we are not gonna recess for 10 minutes, we're just gonna quickly do this. We don't need 10 minutes.
I would urge at least a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess, five-minute recess to move stuff around.
And everybody has to.
I don't know what we need.
Business in the standard order of business, ensuring that pending matters from previous meetings are addressed before moving on to fresh topics. That would include reports of officers, boards, standing committees, reports of special committees, special orders, or unfinished business and general orders. Okay? New business is usually in the agenda. Okay? The reason why I'm mentioning this and brought this up, I didn't mean to lecture or anything like that, but I look for consistencies by in governing and I find some inconsistencies here. Okay? Mr. O'Leary went on to topics, a topic that had nothing to do with North Reading. And he went on for a long, a long time. In fact, eight minutes and thirty seconds, he had spoken on something that was important to him, and I understand that. Okay? The issue that I have is that these were international issues that were being discussed. Just let my note here, please. Bear with me for a second. When that happens. Okay. So he spoke about the lack of, oh, free speech was being infringed upon. Okay? And I was concerned that he said that, he addressed colleges being, not being funded, and he addressed those things, and I was concerned because he doesn't understand what's going on. And I'll say that to your face, candidly. You don't understand what's going on. A president is trying to create peace, and there are things going on in this country that are anti-Semitic, that are challenging our ability as a nation to function. Now, I shouldn't be here talking about this because that's not what, it's not what this forum is for.
Because you'd be critical of what...
Okay.
No, no, no. We're gonna turn into that.
Okay. Okay. I'm being, because I'm reacting...
That's okay.
Steve, 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 I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
I love your ear.
You wanna speak later on? You can speak all you want.
Now, you guys can talk outside though.
Okay?
I'm good.
I'm all for that too. Okay?
I'll do it under oath.
But the point is, you know, is very, very simple. Amy got up and said, "This is no place for what he had talked about." I, as I said, I should not be here. It should not be allowed to have happened in the first place. Mr. Chairman, I wish you had not allowed him to go on for eight minutes and thirty seconds. Then I wouldn't be here tonight. Okay? It's important that the decorum remains consistent, and that was my primary concern. We need to focus on what's important to the town, not Ukraine. Okay? We're not worried about that. Okay? He is, that's his business. Okay? He can do that in a different form, but right now, he should not be using the bullet pulpit, which makes him a bully in the process. Okay? He should not be using this forum to push his own agenda on what he thinks is right or wrong in the world. What I wanna know is, what's he gonna do is right and wrong for North Reading? That's what I wanna know. That's what the voters wanna know. Okay? And the voters made a decision. Okay? They voted people into office, and that's why we are where we are. Okay? Like it or not, Biden was president for four years. Like it or not, Trump is president for four years. That's the way the world works. Okay? And we either rally around our presidents as best as we can, all right, rather than throw our own agenda out there. Okay? So I just wanna say that, in closing this thing, I don't think... And Steve's been doing this for years, ever since he's been on the board. Okay? I know you're looking at my eight minutes are not up. I want his eight and a half minutes. I want his eight and a half minutes. I got three, three minutes to go. Okay? But I'm not gonna build that far. I'm not gonna hog your time that way, but you aren't taking away from me. So I just, you know, he can have his political agenda all he wants, but it doesn't belong here. Amy said it, a lot of people, you know what's going on? There's a lot of hate going around in this town, a lot of bad stuff going around in this town, and no one's willing to mention the group that's doing this. I'm gonna tell you a group is not doing it. It's not the North Reading Republican Town Committee, and it's not the Republicans in the town, okay? And the intelligent unenrolled voters are not doing that. Okay? And even the intelligent Democrats are not doing that. There's a handful of people, okay? And he's with that handful of people. That's all I could say. Thank you.
Anyone online?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone online? Anyone? Okay. Ah, modular replacement cost. Very exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. As was mentioned earlier, the school committee had, I believe, to adjust their schedule to meet tonight, so the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent for finance and operations are at their meeting, obviously. I have provided, though, a copy of what is a statement of interest in the Massachusetts School Building Authority program for a potential project. I'm gonna read directly from the statement of interest for the benefit of the members and for the public. Currently, the district has modular units at the E Ethel Little School and J T Hood's Elementary School that are past their useful life. The district wants to consolidate these units to the J T Hood Elementary School and expand or add a more permanent structure to this school to accommodate the needed six or seven classroom space. This space houses the early childhood programs, pre-K, kindergarten, and other specialized program needs for students in our high-needs population. So I think many in town are familiar with the MSBA process. It paid for forty-six, forty-eight percent of our middle-high school renovation project and new construction project. We also relied on the program for a new roof at the little school about eight or so years ago, so we're no stranger to this process. The school committee and the superintendent have identified this project to replace outdated and deteriorating modular facilities at elementary schools. This would be the first step, expressing our interest. We would then need to be accepted into the program by the state and go through a planning process beyond the initial analysis of the condition of the modulators, which took place roughly six to eight months ago. So in order to submit this application, the superintendent needs approval from the school committee and from the select board in the form of a motion with a resolution that's included. I would urge the board to consider voting and approving that motion. It's on the agenda this evening because there is an upcoming deadline to express our interest, and the superintendent wants to make sure we are well ahead of that deadline. The school committee will similarly be acting on a similar motion at their meeting this evening.
Questions? Do I have a motion, Mr. Massey? Please.
There should be a new paper copy, Mr. Massey, I believe.
So this is for replacing the modular...
Modular.
With a permanent structure.
So that's what they're looking at for a proposed project? Again, it would need to go through the planning process the MSBA requires.
Yep. I was a little bit disappointed at the school committee and the superintendent's statement of interest to the MSBA for only replacing the modular. Now, I wanna point something out, and I tried to find the age of the building while you were talking, Mr. Gilberto, I couldn't. I believe it's nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen sixty-three, might be off. Might be off a little bit. So you're talking about a sixty-five to seven-year-old school that has yet to be replaced. In times nowadays, I don't know why we haven't submitted to the MSBA for a new school. My surprise, and I'm in contact with the MSBA just about every day, their surprise that North Reading hasn't submitted a new elementary school, whether that's one of the two or a consolidation of the two. I know I said consolidation, people probably having a heart attack, but I just wanna bring that up because if we do get a new school eventually, the money that they're going to put into this portion will be clawed back. So their contribution to said potential project, let's say five years down the road, six years, ten years down the road, the hood school is bursting at the seams, and we're asking for a new addition, not a new school. I'm just so surprised, and I've had conversations with Dr. Daley and Scott Buckley ad nauseam about MSBA and getting our, getting the statement of interest submitted, and even if it gets rejected, submit the next year because you're showing that we have major concerns, and you wanna show a trend, is what I've told them. You wanna show them that even if you're rejecting us, we're gonna keep submitting because other districts in the state are succeeding that way. North Reading, I'm just shocked because we've talked about the MSBA, and the MSBA is here. Trust me to everyone in the public, you will see no one more supportive of a new school in this town than I would. No doubt about it. But to ask for funding of an addition is, when your building is nineteen sixty, built in nineteen sixty, to me is like, you're missing the buck. You're missing the bucket. It hurts me. I come off passionate because it hurts me that we had the opportunity to go for a new school, and we're only going for an addition while we're bursting at the seams, while we're due for it. And, sorry, I couldn't, I can't hear. But I'm a little bit disappointed. I would ask this board to really consider my expertise in this specific subject, to know that we're this close in, to put a statement of interest on for an addition, you're moving us farther. You're moving us farther, not only that, but you are giving the MSBA, you're gonna say to the people in North Reading, "Hey, people in North Reading, we might get fifty percent reimbursement on this project. It's gonna be a home run." It absolutely is, but you know, it could be million, tens of millions of more dollars in reimbursement at a fifty percent rate for a new school rather than this, and they're not gonna take their money back at the end of the day. So what they may tell you is that we're gonna get reimbursed fifty percent by the state, but no. When we go to build a new hood school, they're gonna take that money back if it's within twenty years. So this is, I really struggle with this. You'll never, it, you know, I can't support this because I've had numerous conversations with the superintendent and the school committee chair, and I was very disappointed at, to me, a half-effort submission to the MSBA.
Mr. Chairman. Can we have a motion first, let's discuss that too?
Well, hold on, we can discuss it even before, but hold on one second, Mr. Gilberto.
So I know the superintendent's not able to be with us at the meeting this evening. I have talked with him a bit, and we did briefly discuss this at the financial planning team meeting, I think on Friday. I think what he would say in response if he were here, again, he's unable to be, is that the school department believes that there is, you know, because of the investment in the roof, the investment in the systems in those buildings and the renovations in those buildings over the years, that there's useful life left in those buildings, and I think that they're looking to be, they were looking to be considerate of the community's ability to pay for a much larger and probably more expensive project. And I think that's what led them to propose, on the heels of this evaluation of the modulators, a potential addition of a permanent structure at the hood school.
So I'm gonna open this up, I'm gonna do the motion, but here's how I look at it. I agree with you, Mr. Massey, but here's what I know for a fact. What are we looking at? Probably about two-hundred-and-fifty million for a new elementary school?
No, it's not even close.
What would we say?
New elementary school, construction costs, costs are all in?
All in.
How many students?
Four hundred.
Four hundred?
Are you gonna consolidate, or are you gonna...
That's my question.
This is one.
Two, four fifty, sixty million, seventy hundred?
Sixty million.
Seventy, yeah.
I don't see how that's possible.
I don't even know what you're saying.
But the point is, though, that I think that this is a much broader discussion, and I don't think it's, we don't know that for a fact on that number, but I know that this is something that the school committee asked us to look at. But I feel like with the fire station coming up...
The modular, cornupwe?
I think so, yeah.
I'm just doing math in my head.
I, listen, I agree. I've been warning the community and the board since before I got on about the capital improvement needs that are coming down our pipeline, to be careful with your spending because every town meeting, we're going to be asking for more funding of capital needs. But that is fire station, senior center, intergenerational, or, I noted, hood school, little school. I knew the age of it, and you just gotta project out to say, "We're at it, we're there, we're here."
But I think not approving this in the hope that we can convince the community to put down fifty percent of sixty, seventy million, I mean, I don't even have to take a straw pole to tell you that they're gonna laugh at me. They really are.
Well, then, let me, let me...
Well, that's what, the thing is that we still have the vote on this motion.
Okay.
Mr. O'Leary?
First of all, I was the first first grade in the hood school, a long time ago. It was twelve rooms. It was one corridor, straight down, six rooms on each side, cafeteria with a, with a stage in. That's, that's what you got seventy, sixty-five years ago. Right? That's what was there. There have been significant investments in the hood school, the little school, of course, the replacement of the bachelor school. Over the years, there's been extensive renovations, expansions, just take place. The school is not seventy years old, right? And it's not the equivalent of a seventy-year-old school. You and I walked through those facilities, you see what they did as far as the upgrades to all the heating, heating systems, and all the other structural stuff that they've done over the years. Those schools have a lot of useful life in them. We're talking about a four-and-a-half million dollar, I think, four, four-and-a-half million dollar, basically, get rid of a modular trailer, which was a temporary fix, which just lasted twenty years, with a, with a regular structure so that they can, again, move some of the kids around a little bit and actually utilize the facilities better. There's a lot of useful life left in those schools. I have no idea where any of us think, that the public's gonna have an appetite for a new fire station, which is a priority, well above a four-and-a-half million dollar investment to fix the school, you know? We need a fire station first. The schools are in great shape. They have done a fabulous job of maintaining them. This is a modular, temporary unit, which has outlived its useful life, and now they're looking to restructure it and do a better job and have...
I just don't wanna waste our mask.
The thing is, you gotta spend four-and-a-half million dollars, and you gotta get a lot of time out of that school, as opposed to, we spent a hundred-and-twenty million dollars on this middle school, high school project ten years ago. Ten years ago. That school would cost us double that now. To say that, you know, you're gonna get a new elementary school, consolidate elementary school for forty, fifty million dollars, very disingenuous.
You said one for that.
Or what? Disingenuous. I don't believe that's, it's not realistic.
Who's disingenuous?
I think it's misleading. First of all, misleading that the age of the school is not correct, you know, and so anyway.
What am I, two years?
What, what, I mean, you've been here three years, you're saying that it's a seventy-year-old school? It's not.
Hold on, no, 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 we're not gonna do this tonight.
No, but it's not.
This was not a topic to talk about a new school, which would involve the...
I know, but, but you allow the, you allow the conversation to take place.
No, I don't.
You know, so the public needs to be informed.
No, Mr. O'Leary, we're not...
They need to be properly informed. We're not, we're not to the extent of what? That misinformation is gonna be taken as gospel? It's wrong.
No, I mean, it's not gospel. What we're moving on is this, there is no, here...
That's why I asked for the, that's why I asked for the motion.
I respect it when you sign the gamble.
Just hold on, but there's no...
You're not signing the gamble a second time, are you? I signed it for me every time.
This is, there's no agenda item about talking about a new school.
It's about the MSBA statement of interest, which is an agenda item, is to ensure that you need to allow the elected board members to have a discussion, which I know we're having a great discussion.
You said your piece, he disagreed. Mr. Walner, what do you think?
It's not a disagree, it's a question of affordability. In truth, in truth.
What do you think?
I think we should get back to the topic.
To the, and what do you think of the topic, him?
There's a motion.
The motion we're gonna say, yes, about, about doing the modular.
I think if the school is recommended, I trust their, I trust the gentleman. I mean, this is what they do. I mean, if they could have asked for a new school, they would have asked for a new school. So the fact that they've actually tempted it and actually come up with something that's like a compromise, I would consider it. Thank you, because they know what our priorities are. So I think they're, they're being rational under their situation.
Awesome.
I'd like to vote on the motion.
Okay. We don't even have a motion.
We're about to, we're about to, if we can all, you know, just regroup a little bit. We've only been in the room together for two-and-a-half hours, we're already here. We usually don't, we wait till ten o'clock to do this.
And please have a motion, Mr. Massey.
Further discuss? Right now?
After the motion, we're gonna further discuss.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following resolution, optimizing the submission of statement of interest for the hood school modular replacement project. Result: Having convened in an open meeting on April seventh, twenty twenty-five, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the select board of North Reading, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinance, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April twenty twenty-five for the J Turner Hood School located at two ninety-eight A April Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priorities categories, priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state approved local requirements. This statement includes a, this, the statement includes a description of the condition of the modular units of both the J Turner Hood School and E Ethel Little Elementary Schools and the replacement with a permanent structure at the J Turner Hood Elementary School, and hereby further specifically acknowledging that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no ways guarantees the acceptance or approval of the application, the warning of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of North Reading to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Time.
Motion, Mr. Massey, second one, Mrs. Gonzalez, and further discussion, I'll start, Mrs. Gonzalez, do you have something to say?
No.
Okay. Mr. Massey?
Yeah, do we know how, what's the little school doing in here?
So there are also modular units at the little school, and I believe their proposal was to consolidate the functions that are in those modulators to this new permanent structure at the J T Hood School.
Okay. So you remove the modular trailers at the little school and consolidate the program, you add students to the hood?
They would also be removing modular at the hood school as well. Yes. That's my understanding. I think it's a pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, specialized program needs, or what are currently in those modulators at the little school.
Now, remind me of the cost, 'cause I don't know why the cost is in here.
So I believe there was a projection as part of the FY twenty-five capital submission around four-point-five million dollars, that's just off the top of my head. Again, that was to replace modulators with modulators. This project, you know, maybe more than that, again, with the advantage of being subsidized by a potential grant from the Mass School Building Authority.
That was gonna be my statement, was that four-and-a-half million dollars, well, no, no chance, get you an addition on the, on the hood school. So typically, when you submit to the MSBA, you ask for the funding up to the full amount, and the reason for that typically is in case the MSBA goes away. You always ask for more, depending, the reimbursement rate could also be cut down in the middle of your project, which I think I've experienced. So four-and-a-half million, oh, leaves me with a concern that we're gonna go, have to go back to the voters for money.
Yeah, I don't believe it would be fair to classify that as even a rough project budget right now, that was simply an estimated cost to replace the modulators with modulators. This is a more involved project that would, again, qualify for, we believe qualify for a subsidy from the MSBA. And I think as folks are aware, there's a lengthier planning process that we would be entering into should this project be accepted by the MSBA, and we would be learning more about the cost and the potential contribution along the way.
But didn't they have to go in front of the capital improvement planning committee with a cost?
So I believe that, again, going from memory, that they were before us looking for funding to further evaluate the condition and alternatives for replacement. I think during that process, they recognized that there was a possibility for a, an expansion of permanent structure at the J T Hood property.
The issue with not having a school committee representative or the superintendent on this meeting is, is critical. I think you're asking us to prove this, like, he'd be able to answer all these questions? I'm confused on the cost. He can't pay with four-and-a-half million dollars? This is a permanent structure, at four-and-a-half million dollars?
No.
Mr. O'Leary, is that disingenuous to you?
No, timeout, though. He's not saying that. That was a previous thing. This still goes to town meeting to do everything. What you're saying is that we shouldn't even explore it unless until to the penny, we know exactly what it is.
No.
Okay?
We should build a new school.
I would absolutely love to build a new school. I don't know why you don't. That's okay. Forty, you have to come forward with a cost, Mr. Chairman. I don't know why you're giving me those eyes, but if you can maybe have a conversation with me instead of just rolling your eyes and turning around.
I can hold it once.
Yeah, I know, you slam two, I get it. But what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying on, yeah, fine.
About a gray eye, you are good.
They are good.
I saw like two-year-olds.
I'm trying, Mrs. Philmore, I'm trying.
You're acting like two-year-olds, all of you. Well, maybe...
If the public doesn't care about the cost of this...
Thank you for that comment.
Then I don't.
I hear it, give me the...
If they don't care about the cost...
No, no, we're not, hold on, I'm...
That's coming to you.
Thank you. No, I, this motion has gotten out of hand.
No, it's not, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna take, I'm going to take a vote, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to take a vote.
Mr. Chair, there is a cost out there that no one knows what it is going to. Can you explain the scope of that cost, please?
But this is not approving anything. This is just getting what the cost would be so we can take it to town meeting. I, I'm sorry.
I would be in favor of what the school committee is proposing. Again, getting all the facts put together and bringing it to town meeting. I don't see anything wrong with that. I think the feasibility of a, of a new school that's being proposed here, first I've heard of one, as far as a proposal, is being feasible and acceptable to the public, probably from what I've gathered, from what I know, I don't think that's feasible this way. But I think this is a reasonable approach that the school committee is asking us to take. They need our approval in order to bring it forth for consideration by the MSBA, and I think we should be doing it. So I support the motion, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You asked?
Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? I didn't guarantee, so I just, I took a negative consent. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Massey?
Aye.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. Thank you. Let's just all take a deep breath, okay? Mr. Gilberto, please, next motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, the payment and lieu tax agreement for Kirsage River Park One LLC. You did receive an initial presentation on this, and there was an initial discussion at the last meeting with the representative of Kirsage. Present, I believe he is here virtually on the meeting, and I know that the assessor was also gonna join us. I'm gonna just ask if I can get Debbie to unmute herself and just give a brief description of what is before you in the agreement. This is in a final form, approved, generated with town council's help. I'm gonna ask, Debbie, I've just sent you a message to unmute, are you able to do
I'm gonna ask, Debbie, I've just sent you a message to unmute. Are you able to do that?
Hi, Mike.
Hi, how are you?
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. So my book for you is the final document between Kirsage and the town of North Reading. As far as the, as far as the document itself, nothing has changed from what you saw in your bucket last week at the last meeting. The only things that were cleaned up were, number one, the date to tonight's date, which was originally, we had last week's date on there. Uh, some of the, some of the line items had the owner, the owner record is River Park. River Park has no jurisdiction over this agreement. The agreement is between the town and Kirsage. And there were, uh, two other line items that were referencing solar, and this is not a solar project. It is legit, just a battery storage facility. So, I don't know, it's where you have, always we fix the signature line. Hey, outside of that, nothing else has changed.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, this would be a revenue stream for the town over the next twenty fiscal years, beginning in this current fiscal year, actually a thirty-two-thousand-dollar payment that will come in, and then escalating to a high of fifty-two thousand dollars in the last five years of the agreement, twenty forty through twenty forty-four. And that is rather, that is in lieu of the customary tax valuation and assessment, which would see a higher number now, but then a very rapidly deteriorating number, a declining number over the life of the agreement. This was authorized by town meeting in January. It's been prepared and formally approved by town council, and we would ask for the board to, oh, to approve and authorize you as a chair to sign.
Questions?
No, I appreciate, and I, I forget the gentleman's name that was here.
Andrew.
Andrew, his presentation.
Andrew, Andrew Bernstein.
All right, Andrew, thank you very much for his presentation. The, the last meeting it, it was clarifying to me, and I think it's a, it's a great deal for the community and a great deal for running Minister Light and the ratepayers, and it's something that should be invested in over and over and over again. So I'm happy that we're able to have the opportunity to participate, and the taxpayers are gonna be able to benefit financially from the deal, so terrific.
Very awesome.
And big congratulations to RMLD for putting this together too.
Mr. Massey, any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the payment and move taxes agreement with Kirsage River Park LLC to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Debbie, thank you. Appreciate your time and your effort.
Oh, Mike, we're, we're more things to ask. So the ribbon cutting, yes, and right now is gonna be on, uh, April twenty-ninth, I believe. I can get that circled back with all of you who have verified that date, but right now it's except for the twenty-ninth. And Andrew has extended the invite to the select board and income officials that would want to attend.
And that's the twenty-ninth noon.
So the twenty-ninth at noon, Andrew's in the chat. He said the twenty-ninth at noon.
Thank you, Andrew.
I think we all got an invitation.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we got an invitation. We got an email. At least I got an email.
Yep. Great. Well, Debbie, thank you, and Andrew, thanks for coming back this evening. Thanks for visiting us at the meeting last week as well.
You're welcome. So, um, Chairman, through you, Mr. Sudo?
Yeah.
Can you make sure to sign that?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we could use a minute.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Mr. Chairman, through you, as we're transitioning, I will ask if the town clerk, Mrs. Duplin, who is on virtually, can unmute herself. Can you hear us okay, Susan?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, we can hear you loud.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you loud and clear. She is joined also by our constable, Doug Lad, who's seated in the back there. Thank you for being here with us to help us with the process for our annual town election, both a vote to sign the warrant and a vote to authorize early in-person voting. Susan, could you just give us a little bit of description about these two actions, and also describe how mail-in voting is covered in this?
Yeah, so first I just wanted to say that I posted everything you need to know for the May sixth town election on the town clerk's website page. I posted, there's a sample ballot there that everybody can look at. They can print it if they want. You can also register a vote, check or change your voter status, and also apply for a mail-in, early mail-in ballot. The ballots are being printed as we speak. I should have them by the end of the week. Everybody that has applied for an early ballot so far, we'll mail those out. Last I checked, we had about a hundred and thirty applications. Deadline dates to, keep in mind, Saturday, April twenty-sixth is the deadline to register the vote. The town clerk's office will be open nine to five. Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, by five P M, the deadline to apply for early mail-in ballot. And the last deadline is noontime, May fifth, the day before the election, to apply for an absentee ballot over the county. And the in-person early voting schedule before you, I tentatively have those posted on the town clerk's website page. I will update it after the vote. The order registrar is recommended unanimously to approve in-person early voting for the town election. And then also you have before you the town election warrant. And that's it. Your early voting in-person schedule is, we're mandated to do business hours, regular business hours, and of course, we're gonna do this, we have to be in office that Saturday anyway, we're mandated to do at least six hours. So we're gonna be open nine to five on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, and then we'll do two evenings to make it convenient for those who can't get in during the day. If that's okay with the board.
Any questions? And Mr. Massey?
What's the cost to North Reading? To host your in, early voting? I know not all districts and towns do it. I don't think it's a bad idea. I actually like it. But I'm just curious of the cost of the town to have it on Saturday to eight P M on two nights. You know, if our clerk has to manage a voting process, are they taken away from other duties or have to backfill some other roles?
I would ask the town clerk to respond to that.
So cost roughly about five thousand dollars. I staff free election workers per, per day, and then I have two staff, one of my office staff will pay overtime. So that would be for the Saturday overtime, and then the two nights. So roughly about five thousand.
And is there, I think, Mr. Chairman, did, there any reimbursement from the state for that?
Uh, yes, we do get reimbursement for, actually, it's above and beyond. So it would be just the, uh, two additional hours on Saturday, and then the, so it would be eight hours of four evening each night hours. So it would be eight, ten hours we would get reimbursed.
Through you, what's the rationale for the ten hours?
Uh, convenience for the voters.
So...
Getting convenience.
So they will reimburse us for only those ten hours?
Yeah, so it's above and beyond our regular business hours. We get reimbursed. Because we're mandated to be offering during normal business hours.
I was gonna say, can we just make it all after business hours?
Like, that's right.
Very awesome.
Yep.
Can I have a motion, please, Mr. Massey?
Uh, to sign the warrant or to sign the reimbursement for the vote?
Just two motions.
Two.
Sign the warrant, please.
For the warrant, when are we sending that out?
So this is for the, I think it's two-page document, maybe one-page document, that needs to be posted to officially call the election. We don't send it out. The constable will post it in the, the eight prescribed locations here in town, two in each precinct that we leave for those spots. This is not the town meeting warrant. That'll be approved at a later point in time in early May.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the May sixth, twenty twenty-five annual town election warrant.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize early in-person voting for the May sixth, twenty twenty-five annual town election.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes. Mrs., uh, Mrs. Duplin, anything further from us?
None, no, that's it.
All right, well, thank you for sticking around. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Does she point to me?
No. Well, I pointed to you, that you were gonna put it up.
Okay. Kevin, would you mind just dimming the, uh, the lights on the front side of the room here? Those. Thank you. Can you come up just a little bit, Kevin?
Thank you.
How's that work for you, Mrs. Calvin?
I can read it.
Thank you. All set, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, great. You wanna just take us through the updates and then get to the bottom-line numbers?
So the highlighted yellow new growth, um, we have showing an increase. We had eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Now we're showing, um, one million, three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand. Our assessor has picked up, after January one, she can pick up, um, new building permits as new growth. So she has been viewing properties, um, and we've had a number of advancements, some, um, on the Pulte property, some of the, uh, new buildings are coming online, and they've been actually turned into condos at this point, and being sold, so she can pick up the completion on that. And then we had a subdivision in town that moved rather rapidly. They put up five houses rather quickly, so she picked up the new growth on that. Um, so that resulted in close to five hundred thousand dollars in new growth.
So these, just to note, these state aid numbers referred to as the cherry sheet, these represent what was requested or proposed by the governor. We are awaiting the next round of numbers from the House of Representatives, Ways and Means Budget as well, so we'll update those as soon as that information is available, which could be as soon as next week, I believe. We've highlighted in blue, you know, estimated receipts. These are just areas that are subject to potential economic volatility, both in terms of motor vehicle excise, depending upon the purchase of vehicles, as well as licenses and permitting, which will depend upon how much economic activity happens during the course of the fiscal year, and then investment income, which we've talked about for the past couple of years, obviously subject to the interest rates, um, that are, are in effect at the time.
So on the debt service stabilization fund, because we've had an improvement in new growth and possible on our health insurance, we've been relying heavily on free cash to fund, um, the debt capital stabilization fund, and then we withdraw to cover our debt service. So we felt we should take, even if it's a small step, a hundred thousand-dollar step, in reducing what we pull from the debt service stabilization fund in anticipation of our free cash being lower as we move forward and as both revenue and expense budgets get tighter. The transfer from the PFA stabilization fund, initially with Blue Cross, we were anticipating a sixteen-point-eight percent increase in health insurance. They moved down to fifteen-point-eight percent, so that's what you see. To stabilize that down to ten and a half, we'd have to transfer two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars from the PFA stabilization to make their, to stabilize their health insurance rates. But we had another carrier come forward with a five-point-five percent increase. So if that is approved, we will not have to pull anything from the PFA stabilization.
Excuse me.
So, um, the regional school assessments are highlighted. We received a tentative number from Northeast Regional. They expect an increase in the assess, about seventeen-thousand dollars. The Essex Tech assessment comes in much later in the spring. So we're anticipating an increase. There were some changes with special ed and some different costs. So because Northeast Regional increased, we more or less expect that Essex Tech can too. So we put in an estimated increase on both lines. And then down below, can you spell Little? I just wanna explain that. So on the, um, the health insurance, you can see the different numbers there. Um, one scenario is with Blue Cross Blue Shield at fifteen-point-eight percent, and then the last column to the right is the, um, the other carrier at five-point-five percent. We would be funding the PFA contingency, which is our claims amount, at the same amount in all scenarios, but we're showing the actual increase in the health insurance lines for both the municipal and school in the second last column at fifteen-point-eight percent and the last column at five-point-five percent. So as a result, you can see the change in the deficits for both the municipal and the school. Last time we spoke, the health insurance and the new growth were lower, so the health ins, I'm sorry, the health insurance was higher, but the health insurance was at sixteen-point-eight. The new growth was at eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, so we had a deficit of seven-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand on the municipal side. It drops to six, I can't read that, six ninety-nine, thirty-nine?
Six thirty-nine.
With the, ha, ha, drop in Blue Cross to fifteen-point-eight, and then, um, drops to five-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand with the new carrier at five-point-five percent. And likewise, you can see the, the change in the school deficit based on those changes. Any questions on that?
Again, as we indicated earlier, the municipal budget reconciliation we discussed was based upon these numbers. Um, there's a similar conversation that's happening at the school committee meeting, or did happen at the school committee meeting earlier this evening as well, with obviously a larger, a larger deficit and more, you know, dramatic impacts. But, you know, we will, based on the guidance that the board gave us, work through again reconciliation to try to bring you something that's in, a draft form is balanced for, for consideration at Monday's meeting, a week from tonight.
Any questions for, for you? Okay, thank you.
Good to see you, sorry. While we have her here, there was one additional finance item this evening, which is the useful life for the fire department truck. This is the ladder truck, which was approved at the debt exclusion in the November state election as a ballot question. In order to work this into the financing plan that we are planning to utilize, which will spread the cost out in terms of the impact on the taxpayer, there is a requirement that the board formally vote to declare the useful life of the ladder truck as 20 years, which is reflective of the length of time that we expect it to be in service, and again will help us to spread out the payment back over a period, a longer period of time and reduce the impact in any one specific fiscal year.
Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, was this originally a 10-year bond or a 15-year bond?
So I believe it could be a minimum of five years, is that right?
Yeah, I think it must be a minimum of five.
Yeah. I'm not, did it get far enough along through you, Mr. Chairman, the finance director? Did it get far enough along in the capital process that we had a useful life planned other than what the minimum would have been? I don't.
No, I think we planned the minimum. I think we usually planned a longer term. Why would a truck that size have a long glass?
What did, what did we tell the voters at town meeting? We said we were borrowing 1.9 over how many years?
Probably wouldn't be the town meeting, I don't think, but I'd have to check.
I don't think it was a duration of the form of the vote.
No, we did do a tax estimate, you're right. Yeah, we did do a tax estimate.
Yes. I'm just curious. I know the internet's bad in here, so I'll take it, Lori. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but 20 years seems, I was just thinking, I'm not sure what expertise this board has in determining a maximum useful life of a ladder truck.
So it looks like we use 20 years. I'm just looking at the scenarios that we talked about. One was actually the investment of town-owned land funds for that period of time, and it's referring to a 20-year borrowing scenario.
Now, if this, if this ladder truck can now last 20 years, are we cutting it off?
Meaning, would we replace it sooner? Or would we replace it while, if it's still in good shape?
Yes.
So depending upon the town's financial situation at that point in time, that could be an option. I mean, we do do a really good job of maintaining the equipment, but, you know, it just becomes a scenario of where the town stands at that point in time. I mean, I think the current ladder truck that we have is something that, you know, we've kept in good condition. I believe there's an NFPA standard that applies to.
Yes, that's what I learned.
That we're trying to comply with as well, that says that they shouldn't really be in service for more than 20 years, which is what's led us to need to replace the current ladder truck. You did do a quick calculation, you just kept. The comparison calculation, it's clearly 20 years.
Can I have a motion, please, Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, I move to demand some useful life. Health departmental equipment listed below to be financed with a portion of the proceeds of the borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed October 7, 2024, Article 11, hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, to be as follows. Purpose by your ladder truck, borrowing amount 1.9 million dollars, maximum useful life, 20 years, and to authorize the clerk to sign the certification entitled to vote in the select board.
Second. Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, through you. So I'm looking at the presentation from the town meeting. It shows a 20-year borrowing term, but it does state 20 years for bridge and 10 years for ladder.
Okay.
So you have the ability to shorten the term for borrowing, but it will increase the cost in, during the course of those 10 years on an annual basis. I don't know that it would be double.
Well, Tom, this isn't really cost, right? The 20 years, this is just useful life of the vehicle?
The useful life determines then how long it's borrowed for, so that's the relationship.
Why would we tell the people 10 years? Why would we change it?
I think we were trying to be conservative as to the impact on the tax bill. That's my suspicion.
And now we're trying to make it better.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna vote no, because at town meeting, we stood in front of town meeting and gave a note, a debt note of 10 years, and that is what the people voted for. So I'm going to vote no. A maximum useful life of 20 years, to me, is different than borrowing for 20 years. Maximum useful life, to me, is how long it's in service, which is what I know of useful life, but I wanna get this board's opinion on their thoughts of going to town meeting and saying 10 years and now changing it to 20.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Well, I would say that we're lowering the cost to the taxpayer. We're not, I feel like it would be different if we were saying 20 years and then changed it to 10.
You actually doubled the interest rate.
Because of the interest. So, I mean, I haven't, I don't see those numbers. Like, how much would it cost? What's the difference?
You like to vote with the voters, it's not this, man.
Well, if there's, if there's not a big difference, I mean, I don't see the numbers. I would need to see the numbers to make that decision.
The only thing I would add, and again, it's, you know, the board's pleasure, you ultimately issued the notes for borrowing. We don't customarily, nor is a term required to be approved at town meeting. I'm referring to a comparison that referred to the use of town-owned land funds as a scenario, so I don't wanna overstate that as, you know, I'm not saying that we stood there and said, "Do you wanna approve this project for a 10-year borrowing term?" Because that's not what was said. What was said was, "Do you wanna approve this as a debt exclusion funded project that would be project, that would be funded by borrowing?" We then went further with a scenario that described, and I can, I'm happy to put the slides up here as well, that described how we would, you know, the alternative of using town-owned land funds over and up to 20-year period.
How could you do that, though? If, Mr. Gilberto, Mr. Chair, through you, you showed what it would cost per year on your tax. So if you said nine cents or four cents for both the Chestnut Bridge and the fire truck, how could you not have got that evaluation through a bond note?
I'd have to defer the finance director to the treasurer on that. I mean, that was a conversation I'm not involved in. And if we need to get a clearer answer on that, then we will, then ask the board to consider another meeting to.
To me, this motion says nothing about, to be financed with a portion of the proceeds of borrowing authorized by the board.
Positive vote by the board would authorize the treasurer to borrow up to 20 years on it, whereas without this vote, it could only be 10.
I thought the vote was more for the useful life of the truck.
Declaring the useful life allows for borrowing up to that time period.
I disagree. The only reason why I disagree is because of those 10 years, Mr. O'Leary?
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, doesn't mean you can't borrow for 10 years. You can disagree all you want, but you have to understand what the vote is for, and that if it's for clarity, that's fine.
She might have her answer.
Let's have a little bit of conversation to figure it out.
Yeah, you know what? There's a big hallway. Ms. Calvin.
So we're not actually borrowing on this truck right now, because it hasn't been ordered yet. I think we just needed something for bond counsel, because this is the time of year we submit everything, we will be borrowing for other projects. I honestly don't know, I can't reach, I'd have to check with the treasurer as to whether we can defer this until I find out a little bit more. I think I might have run a scenario with the impact on the tax rate probably at the worst if it was 10 years, without running two. I think we were trying to show what was falling off last year in terms of projects and what the new debt exclusion would look like.
I think I remember.
I'm not really sure.
Us showing slides exactly of nine cents and four cents per year.
And I can't find it right now, because I, if, if I ran one, if he's, if Mr. Gilberto found one that shows the comparison to use in Pulte, I probably ran it at 10 years. Unfortunately, I can't find it right now. That would be the max that we would borrow for, but we don't actually have to borrow yet, so I don't know if this vote has to be taken tonight. Otherwise, I would say, let me check.
Yeah, talk to the treasurer.
Because I know we aren't actually borrowing on this vehicle.
Okay. Do we want to defer to?
Can I just ask a quick question? So if, since this was a debt exclusion vote, the term for whatever is determined, what's its order to, we have to pay for it, it's for that time period? It's just for, it's either the 10 years, or the 20 years, or 15 years, or whatever, whatever is determined at the time of the borrowing, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and again, the time period that we're gonna borrow for is determined by this board.
Correct, yes. Right. I mean, you should, we certainly want you to have the information upfront before you decide.
Right.
So you will get it, and we may need to act, I don't know exactly how the timing works out, because we're running into a renewal of some bands. I don't know whether this relates to that or not.
But our meeting's in one week.
If you have a meeting on a weekend, if we need something, so we can have, we'll ask for it.
So, all right, so let's get those answers, so that we can make a more, you know, informed decision and make sure, if we have discretion to whatever, that's fine, but as long as we get a confirmation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, rescind my motion.
Say, there's a motion.
Yes. Who seconded?
I did.
Do we need a rescind for a second? Or no?
I rescind the second.
There you go.
All right, thank you. Okay. Appointments. Board of Registers, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, one comment from me while we're on appointments, probably won't let me bring it up any other time, is Economic Development Committee, where are you at with Economic Development Committee?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Oh, no, well, hold on. Sorry. Mr. Griffin, a quick question, because I have you here. Thank you, not to put you on the spot. As the CPC, do you know to your knowledge, have a chance to review the candidates for Economic Development Committee? Or maybe, just because you're here, if you can then get some info from Mr. Redloff, because that's what I've been waiting on.
Yeah, I would definitely reach out to the chair for that. I know that it was, we did talk about it, one of the problems that we've been having over there is to coordinate quorum, like, they just haven't been able to, scheduling and everything, it's been really tough over there, and it's just been hard to get a quorum. So I think that's like the big problem. You gotta get a quorum to try to talk about these issues and before it, but, yeah, you can do that, just reach out to David and see where he's at with that. He may have a little more information than I do. I know every time I go to these things or sign one of his own, there's never enough people available, so.
So you can't take a vote, no?
Yeah, can't do anything, yeah, so.
It's been hard, it's been tough. No, but I appreciate the update on the slide, but sorry about that.
Yeah.
Oh, no, you already did, no, I'm sorry. So he reads the motion, right? Yeah, I think the motion, sorry, for the registrar.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for reappointment as a full member to the Board of Registars for a term to expire on April 1, 2028.
Second.
Keely Gamblin?
Kylie.
Kylie Gamblin.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary.
Ms. Gamblin has been serving on the Board of Registars for a number of years, recommended by the town clerk for reappointment, as well as the, she would be the Democratic representative on the Board of Registars and the Board of, the Democratic Town Committee unanimously recommended that Kylie Gamblin be reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, what does the Democrat Town Committee have to do with the Board of Registars?
The same reason why Mr. Yule recommended the Republican nominee, we took it to this board.
Statistically, the recommendations have to come from.
Yeah, they have a Democrat and a Republican. This is their pick. We had ours last.
No, I mean, but wouldn't the recommendation come from the Board of Registars?
No, certainly.
That's fellow yourself.
Just like we took Jeff, Mr. Yule's recommendation here last year.
Really?
Yeah. It's the, it's the committee chair that gives a recommendation to whoever the liaison is from the board.
The town clerk reaches out to the respective town committees and asks for their recommendation through her, to be forwarded to the board.
And Hugo was.
That's the process.
Because those are independent from the town.
I'm cool with that.
No, it's the same process, but Republican and Democrat, same.
I had the same question, when was the first time we did, for, whenever, I was behind the chair in my desk.
All the same, that they're independent of the town.
But you have to have one from each party. Right.
Understood, but you're getting a recommendation from a committee that's not associated with the town, regardless of what party.
But it's, for the party, recommendation from the party for somebody that's responsible for the party.
Sorry for asking some more questions. It's roll called, named, Mr. O'Leary.
Kylie Gamblin.
Mr. Walner.
Kylie Gamblin.
Mr. Massey.
Kylie Gamblin.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Kylie Gamblin.
And the chair is Kylie Gamblin. Thank you. You can just wrap the fire up, Mr. Massey, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as a full member to the Commission on Disabilities for a term to expire on December 31, 2026. Two openings, one candidate recommended, Beth McCall.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner. Mr. Walner?
Yep, and Beth is actually listening in right now. She met with the Commission on Disability last week. She has a nursing background, very spirited, very involved, really is gonna be a great addition to the, to the, to the Commission on Disability, and at the same time, we made Gina Moran our, I gave up my acting chair, and now Gina Moran is our chair for the committee.
Mr. Chairman, just one recommendation for the Commission on Disabilities. I would just recommend, I know there's another opening, I know it's not my committee, I'm just making a recommendation, but a civil engineer, if you're able to get ahold of that, who's familiar with ADA, might be nice to look out for the town to find out what's not ADA accessible.
Yeah, we actually, so Jerry has sat in, Jerry Neville has sat in with our group a number of times. He's kind of shown us the entire document of what he goes for, and we pretty much have set up an agreement that anything that comes to buildings, it goes to him, because he's the ultimate approval. We're kind of wasting our time, trying to do what he does very well.
Totally good.
It's a good, good point, but that's, that's how we're handling it.
Roll call, Mr. O'Leary.
Beth McCall.
Mr. Walner.
Beth McCall.
Mr. Massey.
Beth McCall.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Beth McCall.
And the chair is Beth McCall.
Thank you, Beth, for joining us.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
That's enough.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment as an associate member to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on December 31, 2025. Alexis Simpson?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary.
Again, Ms. Simpson has stepped forward to volunteer to be an associate member on the Conservation Commission. She's met with the chairman, Mr. Sanchez, as well as our conservation agent, and recommended this, and she's willing to serve as an associate member, 2025, which is this year. Again, there's been a lot of fluctuation with membership on the Commission now, and this, I believe, brings us to full complement, so we appreciate her stepping forward, and I would recommend Alexis Simpson.
Any discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
Alexis Simpson.
Mr. Walner.
Alexis Simpson.
Mr. Massey.
Alexis Simpson.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Alexis Simpson.
And the chair is Alexis Simpson.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as a full member to the Mobile Home.
No, Mr. District.
Mr. Chairman, I rescind that motion. Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment as a full member to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire on December 31, 2027. Kimberly Marrow.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Just for clarification for my board members, the chair of the Historic District Commission is Mark Hall. So consultation with Mr. Hall and speaking with Ms. Marrow. We have to have a realtor? So, consultation with Mr. Hall, and speaking with Ms. Mara, we have to have a Realtor, as a matter of bylaw, on the Commission, there's a vacancy for that Realtor spot, Kimberly O'Neill-Mara has been a long time, is not a lifelong resident, is not an authorizing active, a member, Realtor in the community, knows the community well, lives in a historic house herself, and is willing to step forward and serve as that representative of the real estate community on the Historic District Commission, and Mr. Hall and myself recommend Kimberly Mara.
Further discussion?
Sounds perfect.
Mr. O'Leary?
Kimberly Mara.
Mr. Walner.
Kimberly Mara.
Mr. Massey.
Kimberly Mara.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Kimberly Mara.
And the Chair is Kimberly Mara.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as a full member to the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, for a term to expire on December 31st, 2026. One opening, three nominations, Caitlin Galvin, Nick Massey, and Stephen O'Leary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
First of all, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove my name from consideration, I put it in there because I wanted to make sure that we had qualified candidates to fill the vacancy, consultation with Mr. Mannion, and speaking with Ms. Galvin, Caitlin Galvin has, brings some experience, legal experience, to this board, and as everybody's aware, we have, well, it's not a very active board, for the most part, she has a requisite background to handle the matter, which is going to be, be forward rather quickly, in relation to basically the decommissioning of one of our mobile home talks, there's legal aspects associated with that, she's aware of it, up to speed on it, and has willingly stepped forward to do it, in addition to that, the rent control board also has to consider applications by the property owners to increase rates, rent rates, on the, on the mobile home, people that live in, in the parks, so she's familiar with that aspect of things, and I think she would serve the community well, so my recommendation is Caitlin Galvin.
Further discussion?
Yeah.
There's one open.
Correct.
Is there a question or a comment?
Am I the only one picking up on this, or am I going frickin' nuts? How many times have I banged the drum of the Mobile Home Rent Control Board being the only volunteer, wanting to, to join? It finally comes back, and you won't recommend me?
I believe we have a candidate who's well-suited to serve well, not as any other candidate is not well-suited.
I think, I think Caitlin's fantastic for this.
Correct. I agree.
But this is just, is this a workaround to keep me out of things? I mean, what is this, Mr. O'Leary?
I've asked this all along, to try and get good candidates.
No one's come forward to this board.
You asked me a question, would you like an answer?
Mr. Chairman, no one's come forward to this board for years, and when it's finally the opportunity, yeah.
But, one, one question, I think that, from what I remember correctly, when both your names were nomination last month, we put out that advertisement, and it was stated at this board, that if we were fortunate enough to get someone from the public that wanted to do it, we did not have to, we put a select board member, that, that definitely happened. So that's, and that's, that's what happened. So I'm just, I'm just recollecting. We put out an advertisement because the entire discussion from Mr. O'Leary wanting to do it, and of course, Mr. Massey, thank you for volunteering, you wanted to do it, was that no one else was stepping up, someone stepped up from the public, who was not a select board member, through the advertisement.
Did we advertise it before that, too?
No, we did not.
We did.
In general, it wasn't.
We didn't put it in the transcript.
With the general advertising, we'd do it like in November, October, November, we advertised.
It was a general, this one was a targeted one.
And you got one candidate? Me?
That was, that was after, that was the end of December.
Okay. So I came forward.
Yeah, and then I came forward.
Oh, that's so dirty. I don't care, whatever.
It's not, it's not, because.
It is.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
To have one of you, a voting member on that board, we would have to go through, I believe, a, a change of bylaw, or, because we, it's not a voting member of the select board on that board right now, right?
No, it's a liaison, that's it.
It's just a liaison, so that would have been a change that would have had to been made, no change has to be made with somebody from the public, that's how it's set up. We don't have a voting member on that board, from the board.
And I, but at the time was not recommending that to occur, I was looking to continue to solicit peoples, and there've been several people that I've approached over the last several months, to, to step forward.
Yeah, just when I started.
So, someone did step forward, very qualified candidate, and appreciate her doing so, and without reservation, recommend.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask if there's any issue with anyone on this board of me serving on this? Because from the understanding that I have, and I don't know why it took so long, it, this feels weird, this feels dirty, and I'd like to get the opinion of all my board members to understand what their thoughts, but I remember that Mr. Gilberto said that, as long as this board votes to put someone in as a voting member, it's fine, so I'm not sure the process.
We could, we could change, we could change the policy and do it, but I, but again, I'm just going back to our discussion.
We do that every day.
But, I was going, I'm going back specific to this, to our discussion, that we were going to advertise this, and that if we did not get anyone from the general public to step up, we were at that point going to take the measures of changing the policy directly, not implicitly, but explicitly, and then, at that point, nominating either you or Mr. O'Leary. This happened, you can rewind the tape.
No, no, I remember.
So, so I did say that?
No, but.
But now, we, well, we got a candidate, Mr. Massey, and Mrs. Galvin, we got the candidate that we were hoping we would get, so we would not have to put a select board member there. So I, that's just.
And, and just, a liaison will still continue to be on the board, whether it be Mr. O'Leary or it changes, at election time, that can change, and you could become the liaison, like, that can change, all of the parties change, that would be a source.
And, and generally, we don't, we appreciate everybody stepping forward, willing to serve, regardless of who they are, rather than, what are we thinking, who's better, who's better, we, we try and avoid all that, and again, we have a very capable candidate, Caitlin Galvin, and Mr. Massey certainly capable, too, I just think that Mrs. Galvin, as the liaison, would serve the board well, and that's why I'm recommending.
Any further discussion?
Only one vote, one recommendation.
Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Caitlin Galvin.
Mr. Walner?
Caitlin Galvin.
Mr. Massey?
Caitlin Galvin.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Caitlin Galvin.
And the Chair is Caitlin Galvin.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment as a full member to the Transportation Committee, for a term to expire on March 12th, 2026. Lawrence Susi.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner. Mr. Walner?
Yeah, I see May 5th, but that's just technicality. Yeah, Larry Susi is a neighbor of mine, I know quite well, I talked to Will about it, and he's a good choice for the Transportation Committee, so I do recommend him.
Just one opening after that, correct?
Yeah.
Right. Any further discussion?
Is that Dave Ron, Mr. Walner, does that need to be changed?
He said May 12th, I, I don't know.
Oh, oh.
It says May 5th on mine, I just don't know.
I said March 12th.
Oh, oh, March.
I changed.
No, no, that's fine.
It's, I just, I'm just.
Actually, you know what?
Just trying to straighten out.
Which one's right?
No, the, the May 6th one was, was supposed to be on the rent control board, if it was going to be Mr. Massey or myself, because it would be co-terminus with our terms, so I think it should be December 31st, 2026, I think it was just, it was switched.
So then.
The May 6th, well, because both of us were on the other one.
Then we have to rescind the, Mr. Massey, then, what they're saying is the transportation one should be December 31st. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, next, doesn't matter. Order of consensus? Any amendment?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment to the date of that motion, to change to May 6th, 20?
No, December.
December 31st, December 31st, 2026?
Yeah.
Yes.
Second.
Amendment by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. Walner. Any further discussion?
On the amendment?
On the amendment. Hearing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
No, Larry, roll call.
Call.
Oh, yeah, the amendment, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Walner. Mr. Massey. Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Chair is aye. Okay, now on the actual motion for the person.
As amended?
Yes.
Yeah, Lawrence Susi.
Mr. Walner.
Lawrence Susi.
Mr. Massey.
Lawrence Susi.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Lawrence Susi.
And the Chair is Lawrence Susi.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Massey would accommodate us with a motion to amend the term for the rent control board to be December 31st, 2026.
It was.
It was?
It was.
Because I, what I see, he was, oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I apologize. I apologize, great, don't need to change it, great.
Okay, legal bills?
Mr. Chairman, through, so we have the answer on the borrowing for the ladder truck.
But you don't want to go home, do you?
Not that I don't want to go home, but the, the news is, I think, good, which is that when we advertised to the public about the cost of the debt exclusion, it was advertised with debt service at an average of $142,000, which would represent a 20-year borrowing term. So, the scenario is that we run for the interest calculation at town meeting, were intended to be conservative estimates, but when we informed the public about the vote that it took and approved, we showed that it would be a 20-year borrowing term.
Can you, can you send me the slides from the town meeting?
I can put them right up there, actually. Yeah. Would help.
I mean.
Yeah, well, if you're down, we'll just bring that back up.
Then we could ask.
Yeah, then we can bring it up.
Okay.
But the anticipation is if we're saying it's 20-year debt, that it's a 20-year service length.
Right, but that vote, that vote needs to be taken, not authorized.
Now we have the slide, please.
Just to make sure they match.
Sorry, what are we waiting for? He's putting up.
Just.
Hold the slides up.
So this is, see if I can zoom in a little bit more on that. This is a slide from the presentation at town meeting, on the ladder truck, talking about the need, we talked about the estimated cost of $1.9 million, and actually, we said right here, the average annual debt service is estimated to be $142,000, so that, that answers it, the, sorry for any confusion that I provided, but on the next slide, when we showed a projection of the cost benefit of using town-owned land, we ran a more conservative estimate, not with regard to the bonding, but with regard to the use of funding from town-owned land, we ran that at 10 years. So that was simply an example that we showed of the cost benefit, and we brought it up, when we put the actual proposal for funding, it was clearly for 20 years, at $142,000, so, simply a misstatement on my part that spun us off, I think, on this, unfortunately. But this is, this is, I'm sorry, this is the slide that shows the $142,000, which the Finance Director has the backup to show, it fluctuates year to year, depending upon the life, but it was $142,000, which represented a 20-year term, and then, once folks are done looking there, just, I can show the website, too, that just shows, we told the voters when they went to the ballot, after that.
Excuse me?
I was going to bring that motion back up.
Okay, Mr. Massey, can I have that motion back up, please?
Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I'm chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that the maximum useful life of the department equipment listed below to be financed with a portion of the proceeds of the borrowing authorized for the vote of the town passed on October 7th, 2024, Article 11, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, to be as follows, purpose, fire ladder truck, borrowing amount, borrowing amount, this says $1,900, now I'll correct this to $1.9 million, in maximum useful life of 20 years, and to authorize the clerk to sign the certification entitled "Vote of the Select Board."
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for January in the amount of $14,585.42, as follows, general, $13,335.92, labor, $1,249.50, total, $14,585.42.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for February in the amount of $13,632.32, as follows, general, $13,338.32, labor, $294 flat, total, $13,632.32.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any further comments for the meeting notes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the March 17th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mr., sorry, Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the March 26th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the regular session minutes for the March 31st, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another ministry report.
No report this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All of your business, I will start with this to the right, Mr. Massey. Mr. O'Leary?
Could have been Mr. Massey.
I don't know, I just, I'm just, I'm throwing darts, just go.
So again, the Hillview Commission continues to meet, and is, we're having another meeting in about a week and a half, again, talk about the potential demolition and for future use of the functional facility there, and again, is preparing for presentation to the board, prior to town meeting, probably prior to the public hearing on the warrant office, just to make you aware, ongoing discussion and investigation as to what to do with it. Again, recognizing that the ultimate decision rests with recommendations from this board and town meeting, that's the one, what's going to be done. From that, just to augment what the Republican Town Committee is doing, the Democratic Town Committee is also having a candidate tonight, going to be here at Town Hall on April 17th at 7:00 p.m., then again, I would urge every member of the public to go to both, and if you can't make one, make the other, because the, to covet upon the candidates to state because to commit upon the candidates to state their positions on things and let people know where they stand on the issues, it's a great opportunity. We're going to have two opportunities now, on April 17th and again, what is it, the 29th?
9th.
Yeah, the 29th. So just mark the calendars and come and listen and ask your questions and voting is important, you know? And voting's had, elections have consequences, so it's important for people to participate and come and listen and give a vote. I'd also like to recognize the efforts on the local organization, again, it happened to be the Democratic Town Committee that had a gathering, an apothecary in support of Ukraine, and they raised over $2,000 for the effort and almost 60 people attended, North Reading, it was great. Just wonderful effort on their part to raise awareness for what's going on around us. And then just a brief comment in relation to, you know, Mr. Yule's comments and how I use this fully puppet and what, what's important to this community. That's reaching every one of us to decide what's important to us and what's, how it reflects on us and how we think it impacts us. You know, what's happening at the national level right now is going to come back and affect this community in relation to federal funds that have flowed through the state into the cities and towns. They're going to be adversely impacted and we need to be cognizant of it. And we talked about it at the Financial Planning Team meeting. And while we don't have all of it sorted out yet because we're not exactly sure because this litigation taking place is that what's going to flow, it isn't, it's definitely going to have an impact on the school, school departments, school fundings and some of the grant programs that we are currently enjoying now. So, we just need to be cognizant, aware of it. And also be aware that what does happen at the national level does trickle down and impacts town and North Reading and impacts the deliberations of this particular board. So, if he's offended by the fact that there's things being said about national politics and elections, you know, I guess I'm not sorry that he's offended by it, but it's, I'm sorry that he feels that way. And I will continue to speak on it as I feel necessary to make whatever points I think are important to the town and North Reading. And as far as the role that I play and what, what I should be doing, I think, you know, several decades of service to this community, the town and North Reading speaks for itself rather than a little grant standing here at the beginning of the meeting. That being said...
Public comment, Mr. Chair, public comment. You're next.
So as far as, that's, it's fine, he certainly entitled his opinion and I think when he sat here as a member of this board, I sat here and defended his right to speak his opinion and I will continue to do so and I welcome his opinion here this evening and his ability to sit here and state his opinion, even if I don't necessarily agree with him. So, I welcome his comments, I welcome his input. Don't always agree with him, but I don't question his motives necessarily, as he may be questioned by, but he has every right to say what he has, willing to listen, and I embrace the opportunity that he has to do so through, through public comment. And again, just in relation to public comment and some of the things that Mr. Yule said, kept referring to Robin's Rule of Order, Robin's Rules of Order has nothing to do with public comment in the operation, matter of fact, our policy specifically says that we are not going to be abiding in the Robin's Rules of Order. But he sat here for six years and I'm sure he knows that. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Massey?
Mr. Chairman, can I just join you and Mr. Yule for that coffee? I just want to be a buck on the wall, I won't say a damn thing, I just want to come and see you two.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my new business was, I wasn't, you know, planning on saying anything, but my, my new business was more so, you know, when I sit here in this seat, when I get ready to come to these meetings, I think about North Reading. I do not think about Trump. I do not think about Kamala. I do not think about Republicans and I do not think about Democrats. I met a lot of people when running for this position that I take serious in coming here to be the voice of, and be the ears for. I don't like the divide in the community. I think this community is so much better than that. It's not the community that I met, it's not the community that I moved here for six years ago. And, you know, I, I have a lot of friends on both sides and it kills me to see this because that's not the community that we are. And, you know, you can all have different opinions and everyone should respect each other's opinions. And I know I've gone at it with a few of you, but at the end of the day, you know, if I saw you guys for coffee, I'd, I'd buy you one, you know, if I saw you at the bar, I'd buy you a beer. You're going after this. So that, that offer expires on May 6th. Just kidding, yeah. But I do mean it, I do mean that, it hurts me, I hate to see it. People are going after people's livelihoods, people are going after people's businesses. People have lived here and their, and their parents have lived here for over 80 years. They have kids that live in this community. They are blue collar and I tell you one thing is when you go start going after the blue collar workers in this town, good luck. See how that works out for you? But I will say that I don't like it regardless, you know? I sit up here without a D next to my name, without an R next to my name, I have an NR next to my name and I, I take that proudly. It hurts me and I don't want to see anyone go after anyone else. You can disagree, you can push your candidates and, and what they stand for as much as you like, but to start going after other candidates, sending out mailers of other candidates, putting other candidates' business on Facebook, to me, that's unacceptable and that's not North Reading. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walner?
Yep, so from the Consulate of Aging, the 16th Annual North Reading Town By Yard Sale is Saturday, May 3rd, rain or shine, from 8 to 2. It's sponsored by the Friends of the North Reading Council on Aging. And to get an application, just stop by the Senior Center. Deadline to register is April 18th, 2025. And they can take payment by Venmo or check, and it's a very popular, that's been going on for a number of years. The Sustainability Committee is having a sustainability fair and Earth Day celebration at Flint Memorial Library on April 12th, not to be confused with 4/12 for marijuana. So, and they're going to have various materials and data about the town, including trash, recycling, composting, town building improvements and water usage. So, come to the library on April 12th and come celebrate Earth Day with them. And the last thing I'll say is there was an announcement about Kristy Gorman passing.
I knew her when she was a little kid. She played with my kids. So it's very sad to see this. Anyways, just, she's like, I think she has three children, very nice person, very nice family and it's very sad to see this happen. That's all, thank you.
I just wanted to talk about St. Teresa's had a really successful car raffle this weekend and raised, I don't know the exact number, but it was close to $200,000 for the updating of their stained glass windows. One person won a car, Dennis Sullivan Jr., and nine others won $500. It was a great, great community event and congratulations to the winners and congratulations to the group that put all that effort into that. And I'll just add to Mr. Massey's comments that, you know, the Saddle's Board for six years has come into an end, I'm going to miss it in ways, in other ways I won't, but, you know, none of that should come into it. I have Democrat friends and I have Republican friends and I have friends that I don't even know what they stand for, because it doesn't matter, you know? And I try very hard not to bring my own political feelings to this venue. They don't belong here. We're here for the town, we're here for the people of the town, no matter what they stand for, for the betterment of the town and that's what we should be all here doing together.
Just one thing I forgot to mention, just the Historic, the Historical Commission had a fundraiser at the Damon Tavern a couple of weeks ago and it had some paranormal, paranormal experiences and it was a wonderful event that they put on, they raised over $1,000 towards renovations for the Damon Tavern, they were able to accommodate 40 people at the time and it appears as though we have some residents living at the Damon Tavern that aren't paying any rent.
Get out of here.
Yeah, so it was a fantastic event, some Francine Coffin and the Historical Commission and Historical District Commission and Historical Society and all that involved with putting that on. First of all, it was very successful and it was very entertaining, it was a great evening. Secondly, it is so wonderful to see someone and some group actually utilizing that facility, getting the public in there to see what's going on and enjoy the roofies, port of heroes and they're looking to do more going forward. But it was a great event, it was a wonderful event that they participated in and I had my tarot cards read, didn't really tell me anything, did, early on, I guess. But it was, it was a great evening and a great success and we congratulated them first of all for the efforts and putting it on, secondly, the ongoing effort to raise money and fund some renovating for the Damon Tavern, so it was a great event. I apologize for not making it earlier.
My only commentary is on Mrs. Gorman as well. So, none of my kids had her just because she's in another school. However, I know what teachers here in North Reading do. I know what they do more than just what you care about, I know what they do after the classroom. I see the emails, you know, that come and they go above and beyond, they, you know, when you, when you don't respond, just in case you missed it, they email again. And then I, I can only imagine what her young family is going through because it's young and having a young family myself is very relatable and when you hear things like that, it's just, there's really nothing you can say. You can do the best you can to support as a community. And I am happy that it does appear, you know, since we're having the discussion that at least that's one thing that the entire community can get behind on and that's really nice. But because I wanted to stay here, I know it's customary to do ahead of time, but I would like to rise for a moment of silence for her, if everyone doesn't mind.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Mr. Massey, can I have the last motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn at 9:53 PM.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Massey, second by Mrs. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.